I apologize, running a couple of seconds late here on me not paying attention to the clock. We're gonna call this meeting the Line County Board of County Commissioners to order. Today's Thursday, June 2nd, 2022, 9:00 AM. That's what I thought. Can you hear it now? Yeah, that's just turn my head away. Okay, to avoid meeting disruptions, please place your cell phones and beepers if anybody has that beast anymore. In the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting, please. And I'll make sure I do the same thing. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner possible. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public, any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict time, place and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Board of Commissioners convening as other boards. Members of the Board of County Commissioners also serve as the Liquor Board, Central Lion Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards as indicated on this or separately posted agenda. This meeting may break between 11:30 and 1:30 for lunch and that'll be based on the feeling of this board and staff. Okay, we're gonna go into number one roll call. We have, I'm sorry, okay, we have Commissioner Jacobson, myself, Commissioner Henderson and Commissioner Hockaday in chambers. And we've got Commissioner Keller on Zoom. Item number two, invocation given by Matt Christensen of the Church of Jesus Christ Latter Day Saints. Matty, what's, alrighty. Then after that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance and I think we'll have Commissioner Hockaday do that one today.
Our dear heavenly Father, we are grateful for the relative peace and safety that we enjoy in this valley and the moisture with which thou has blessed us with. We are grateful that there was a rash of violence against innocents in this country that we have been protected from that. And we would ask you to be with all those affected by that. During this meeting, Father, we ask that all the discharges be civil and the decisions that are reached will be in the best interest of the residents of this county. Bless all of us to treat each other with love and respect and to try to be better each day. We ask for these things, Father, in the name of thy holy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Christians, and thank you for coming out today. I don't think we've had an LDS rep out here before and I've been banging on the walls trying to get one. So thank you for coming out. We're trying to, so we want to make sure it's open to everybody and everybody knows you're welcome to come out. So thank you. Okay, we're gonna go to our first public participation. No action will be taken on any item unless it is properly agendized. It's anticipated the public participation be held at this time, though maybe return to it anytime during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda item. But before the board takes any action afterwards, please print your name at the clerk's desk. If we have any public participation in house, come on up.
Good morning. My name is Joanne Lawson and I live in Smith Valley. At previous meeting, you all were presented with a flyer announcing a community meeting being held on May 25th in Smith Valley regarding the large open pit copper mine potentially coming to the valley. The lands bill, water, and what all this would mean for Smith Valley. Sadly, all of you were absent, including Mr. Hockaday. Also absent were any members of the Smith Valley Citizens Advisory Board, including your newly appointed member and chairperson, Mr. Tom Renner. Mr. Renner found it appropriate to respond on the next door app posting of the meeting flyer with a laughing haha emoji. Many of us found this to be inappropriate and unprofessional. We did have 80 to 90 concerned residents in attendance along with several political candidates who supported not having land in a lands bill for mining. Their attendance was greatly appreciated. As stated on the county's website, the advisory board's duties include to provide advice on land use, services, budgets, taxes, and other matters, represent the views and concerns of citizens in a fair and equitable manner, serve as a liaison between the citizens of Line County and the county commissioners, and disseminate information to the citizens on issues of concern. All of our citizen advisory board members are appointed by your board. Are they living up to their duties? One would think that they would be doing their own research on the lands bill, water, and the mine. However, they refuse to really even discuss it because, quote, "They don't know anything about it." As one Smith Valley resident put it, and I quote, "None of them bothered to show up for the meeting. My first reaction is I am speechless. Then I realized a lot of words that come to mind. Agregious, shocking, outrageous, scandalous, angry. And we should have the power to vote these people in or out when they don't do their job. I have bumper stickers and a petition asking to keep the public lands public and out of the lands bill if anyone is interested."
Thank you, ma'am. And just, just so you know, I don't usually respond and the board doesn't usually respond. But your concerns are shared by us as well, and that's why the county manager will, will confirm this. Reaching out to Hud Bay and actually asking them to come here and present. Because officially, I don't know about you guys, none of us have received an official presentation from them. So it's just pie in the sky at this point, as far as I'm concerned. So.
Well, going, going back.
It was just like, yeah, no more discussion of that. Just want to let you know where, you know, at least where I stand and want to get them out here. So thank you. Is there anybody else in house for a public comment or online? Alrighty, thank you. Moving on, possible action, review and adoption of agenda. Aaron, was there a change you wanted to make on the agenda? Or is it, we hit it when we get to it? I think it was in the end.
I'm trying to scroll as fast as I can. At the very end, there was a clerical error.
Okay.
On the Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board. Number 25, public participation be prior to the adjournment and reconvene aligning County Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, just make sure I handle that right when we get to it. I'm trying to see what's going on, but okay, I got you. There we go. Public participate, okay, so the reconvene, so we need to swap that. Okay, looking for a motion. Do they want to make a motion?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the aforementioned change on the, well, that's a different board anyhow. So I approve the agenda.
Second, yeah, we have a motion, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Anybody opposed? The agenda is approved as presented. Presentation of awards and or recognition of accomplishments. Do we have anybody today?
No, sir.
Okay, we're gonna go on to Commissioner's comments. And at this time, I'm gonna reserve the right to go ahead and go first this time. I gotta say, with the recent events, event that happened in Texas, you know, my heart, I can't tell you how heavy it is and how broken it is for those families, having watched the videos of those families waiting to see if their kids were coming out of there alive or injured. The officers that had gone in, you know, everybody's armed terror quarterbacking it now. They didn't know what they were facing. But it is just an absolute horrific, horrific event that took place. And there's nobody in this world that can convince me that evil does not walk this earth. How anybody could do that to those poor defenseless kids and the, and the teachers who were there to teach them. It is just, it's gut wrenching and it's heartbreaking. And I just, you know, at this point, actually, I'm gonna let Commissioner Jacobson say something as well as soon as I'm done. As soon as he's done, I would like to go on ahead and take a, just a one minute break, not break, a one minute brief moment of silence. And I just think about those children and the parents and their families. And as you know, I mean, there was secondary and tertiary effects. The one, the one child or the one teacher who was killed. You know, his wife died and it was what, two days later from a heart attack? And then left their kids parentless and they were just, you know, getting ready to celebrate their, I think it was their 27th wedding anniversary. You know, words can't, you know, words cannot describe the, you know, the pain that they're feeling and that the rest of the country's feeling. So without, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and turn over to Commissioner Jacobson now.
Thank you, Chairman Gray. I join in your, I'm sure our entire board sympathies to the, just the senseless tragedy in Texas. You know, I can just picture those kids bebopping their way to school. Just a couple of days left for summer break and just the senseless, senseless act, acts that the person did is beyond, is beyond comprehension. I don't know how, truthfully, I don't know how anyone could hurt anybody else intentionally and let alone kill them. So I, I joined, I joined our commissioners in, in, in supporting those families. And again, my heart and my wife's heart and our entire family joins in in the struggles that we're all facing, trying to comprehend and deal with this. So thank you, Commissioner Gray.
Thank you. So if, you know, if you guys wanna, we're gonna take a minute here in just a second. If you want to bow your head and say a prayer, want to stand up, you know, or, you know, however, however you want to use this minute. I just encourage you to please, you know, think or pray about those families and survivors. They're the ones that are, they're the ones that are really dealing with this. So go ahead and start that. Thank you. All right, thank you all for that. Go to my right here, Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't really have too much to report. That's a quiet end of, end of May, which was good. I will be attending the Sloop Act meeting tomorrow, the State Land Use Plan Advisory Committee. It's gonna be held in Wintemucka, but I'm gonna just zoom in on that. And I also want to express our sympathies for the tragedy. And, but I do, I do have to say, once again, people are taking advantage of this tragedy to try to come after our second amendment rights. And that's something that we have to fight really hard to protect because it's not the gun, it's the person. So thank you.
Mr. Hockaday. Thank you, Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody who came out to the Hillcrest Cemetery and helped prepare it for the Memorial Day ceremony. And I'd also like to thank everybody who was there at the ceremony on Memorial Day. Rotary, of course, was very much involved in that, put flags out at all the veterans' grades. And we had a ceremony that day to take care of honoring them. Also, we've had a bear problem in the Desert Creek area and I'd like to thank Nevada Department of Wildlife for quick response. And they're gonna get a trap out there tomorrow. I know I went up to help some people up there and was confronted by the bear. Luckily, he decided to leave when I screamed at him. Wanted to try to have a late dinner. But there are several bears in the area and they're causing some pretty, pretty good damage to people's property up in that area. Also, just one note for people who have been listening to the, the public comment. I did help set up the March 2nd meeting between Hud Bay and the community. I was there, standing room only crowd, school auditorium, multipurpose room. Help hand out chairs and keep things going and making sure that we had property there set up so that everybody could discuss the situation within the community. So as far as being involved in the community, I am. I may not make a meeting. I did read the nasty email that I received at 12:30 in the morning the next day. So I would like to set the record straight. The first time comments were made about the commission up here, I responded on the, the next day. And that is, the commissioners up here are not making any money off of Hud Bay. Second comment had to do with the nasty gram I got at 12:30 in the morning. None of us are voting to sell anything to anybody because none of us have seen the lands bill. And when the lands bill comes out, the public will have their comments to make on the land bill. That's when things will start to happen or not happen based on what we are presented as a commission. So if we could get that straight through people who are concerned, that we are also going to wait and see what's presented. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hockaday. Comments are spot on. Thank you. Commissioner Keller.
Yeah, just real quickly, Commissioner Hockaday, thank you for those comments. People have a tendency to make assumptions. I just wanted to say that, you know, I attended the memorial service up at the Fernley Veterans Cemetery on Monday. Mr. Page, thank you for being there. Mr. Gray. I was pleasantly surprised to see more people coming out. Last year when they had it, we actually had a good turnout considering the previous couple of years, they couldn't hold it due to COVID. I do believe our numbers count was even higher this year. So it was, it was really nice to see everybody actually come out to the cemetery in honor of their friends, their loved ones that have been lost. So I think it was a very good event and very much appreciated. One more comment. I don't know all the particulars, nor do I need to know. Just want to make comment, you know, we've been really focused on Highway 50 with accidents. Just wanted to note, we had another fatality on 95A yesterday between Silver Springs and Yarrington. You know, as we're talking to end up moving forward, I would hope as a board, we don't forget to have that discussion about 95A. It's getting worse every day. Near misses, accidents, and getting to be, you know, too many fatalities on that road as well. There's no quick fix. We can't fix people's driving. Like I said, I know the circumstances of that one yesterday. But that two lane road is, is getting more dangerous every single day. So I'll just end with that.
Thank you. I want to circle back and round it out. I, I didn't want to throw any of my other comments into my initial comment. But Dayton had a fantastic, the VFW there, it's now consolidated VFW with Virginia City. And they had a fantastic Memorial Day ceremony at the Dayton Cemetery and put, you know, they replaced all the flags. Good little community service. It was really nice. And so many compliments on how clean and well-kept that cemetery is. And if you guys have never been out there, I challenge you to get out there and walk through it and look at it. There's a, there's a, one person that's buried out there that actually has a trap door on top of her grave with an old fashioned paddle lock on it. And I don't know if that's for emergency egress or what, but she's also got a dead letter box on her grave and it's got letters in it. So it's a, it's kind of humorous. And, you know, as many times I've been out there, I just recently realized there's a former Nevada governor out there from 1950 to 58. His name escapes me, but it's, he's buried out there. So I, yeah, is it the county that maintains that, that cemetery? That is just, they do a fantastic job. And if they ever need volunteers, please put it out there because I know there's a bunch of us that'd be willing to get out there and take care of that little treasure. The Fernley Cemetery, the, the Northern Nevada Veterans Coalition and the event they do out there along with the Department of, or the, what do they call it now? The Nevada Office of Veteran Services or Department of Veteran Services. Believe it or not, Commissioner Keller, they said their count was the highest this year that it's ever been. I was kind of shocked, but I think it was because it was more consolidated under the covered tent that it didn't seem like it was as crowded. It was just much more orderly. And it was just very, very well, well-attended. And with regards to traffic safety, I almost didn't make it here this morning myself. Some idiot, I'll call him what he is, on 95A in Silver Springs. Came up on me, had to be into an 80. I was stopping for a semi that was gonna make a left going towards the train tracks off 95A. And he couldn't stop before he hit me. So he swerved into the oncoming traffic lane, which was, thank God, blocked by the semi that was turning left. But he almost wound up going under the flatbed trailer. So he was, he stopped within feet, basically. And then the same guy 10 minutes later passed us all illegally on a, on a double, on a double yellow line. So you can't fix stupid, but you know, they may, they may correct themselves sometime. But thank you, guys. And I will now turn over to County Manager. Thank you.
Good morning, Jeff Page, County Manager, for the record. Some things to report on. If you haven't seen it in the media, the United States is facing a potential shortage of depth, which is the chemical additive that goes into diesel. Especially for newer diesel vehicles that they can't run without it. So we're very concerned what that looks like for our, some of our newer fleet vehicles, specifically doing roads and maybe some of our utility vehicles. So staff is working through that process. The challenge is, is that Russia, China, and India manufacture one of the key components of that depth. And they have decided to stop selling it to anybody else. So we laugh, but the challenge of that is, is that the trucking industry is already facing logistics issues. And now they can't get fuel or even be a bigger challenge. So we'll be working with the, the state and other entities to keep abreast of this and keep you informed. I did attend the Nevada, or the Memorial Day event at the Veteran Cemetery in Fernley. It was very well done. Yarrington also has a small event here with the VFW. I was able to attend that this year because I was firmly, but my mother said it was the usual good show of the VFW folks. So kudos to them. The board passed at the last meeting, or at the special meeting, the ARCA funding projects. Staff is working a way to get those things moving forward and getting them out in the public and seeing what we're doing. Moving forward from there. I do want to address a couple of things. An interesting comment was made this morning as well as other concerns I've heard over the last two weeks about citizen advisory boards. One is why aren't they elected? Well, one, because the interest 244 that allows the Board of Commissioners to create citizen advisory boards very specifically states that the Board of County Commissioners appoints. If a community wants to have elected representation in their community, then they can go through the process to become an unincorporated township. But the citizen advisory board is set up specifically in our interest 244 created by the Board of County Commissioners for specific or general purposes, I believe is what the statute says. So we're moving forward with that. We also are dealing with significant issues and dealing with information and misinformation that's out there on a variety of events. But I will give you an example. Yesterday, we received a phone call that there was a loud explosion in the Smithi area and it was the mine. There is nothing going on at the mine. We believe, we're still verifying, but we believe Endow has been working the Walker River. We know that they were doing it yesterday morning and the day before, East Walker out by Flying M and around to the elbow, blowing a beaver dance. So that could possibly be it, but we're still checking. When I got the phone call, I called our dispatch center. They were not aware, nobody reported them in explosions. They were not aware of any, any ongoing dynamite operations anywhere in the county. But that got going. And so the person calls me and then I started getting other phone calls and started seeing things on, on social media. And without ever checking facts is what we're dealing with today. And it's not just, it's not just here, it's everywhere, right? I mean, all you have, I don't care, I don't care what side of the fence you're on. I don't care what news station you watch. We have a ton of misinformation out there. So we're doing our best to keep the public informed with what's actually going on in the county best we can. We don't always know everything and moving forward. I do want to comment on the Hud Bay issue. The board is exactly right. There is no public lands bill. We have identified and notified the public on more than one occasion that probably the end of June, beginning of July, we will publish the maps. We'll start taking the show to the communities. Similar to what, how BLM or Forest Services are scoping meetings with a room full of the map people will be able to write their comments down on comment cards, capture all that data. Put it all together is what they like, what they don't like. Maybe they want to see some public land someplace that we haven't thought of, incorporating that public lands bill, those kinds of things. So we're working through that process now. It is not a quick process. We have met with both Congressman Hamid's office and Senator Cortez-Bach's office on the issue. They're willing and ready to help us sit down and write things once we get to that, that whole process, including there. We're still waiting for information from a number of stakeholders, including state and Nevada and the two Indian tribes, Native American tribe, excuse me. So we'll continue moving forward from there. And then finally, I just want to congratulate, starting tonight, we have the weekend of high school graduations. And I just want to congratulate all the seniors that are graduating this year and moving forward. I'm fortunate that my youngest son is, is graduating on Friday night. So when he walks across the podium and gets his diploma, I'll bring him on the other side with some cash and tell him move on. So we anticipate some, some busy weekend throughout the, the county with high school graduations. I strongly urge parents, each of the schools does a safe and sober night to ensure that their kids go to that versus doing what used to be done. Going out drinking and causing problems, getting himself in a car accident. It's been a long time since we've had to deal with those issues. And I'm really hopeful that the students graduating will take advantage of those programs so that we can keep it safe for the weekend. I'll entertain any questions or comments you may have.
Interesting senior comment there about saying goodbye to your son there. But I'm have a feeling that after a couple of weeks of being an empty nester, your wife will be saying so long.
You know, last year, last year, I made my wife go camping with me a couple of times by ourselves. She said, why are we doing this? If you can't like me for the weekend, what are we gonna do with the rest of our lives?
So just got to correct you, Jeff. Dayton High School had their graduation last night. So, yeah, we came up to, first time I'd ever seen it, we had a deputy standing at the intersection directing traffic and kind of thought it was funny. I said, practicing to move to New York or something and then it dawned on me, it was high school graduation. But that was, there you go. Any questions for County Manager? Okay, Ms. Keller?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment under Commissioner comments. I, I kind of skipped over that because I was talking about the things. But the kids in Silver Springs will be holding their graduation tonight. And hopefully my allergies are doing better by then. But anyways, I will definitely be there. My first grandchild, my granddaughter will be graduating tonight. So.
Woo, congratulations to her. And have you guys got anybody graduating this year?
Yes, my daughter's graduating at high school.
Congratulations.
Coming in, so let's keep the comments short, shall we? Let's go. Come on, chop, chop.
I do want to point out one thing that was missed here real quick. Tony Yarborough, longtime VFW and active member of this community here in Yarrington. Longtime VFW member, passed away suddenly the other day. So that's gonna be a great loss to the veteran community as well as, as Yarrington. The guy had a massive impact, especially on the veteran community and he's gonna be missed. So moving on. moving on, I won't, uh, I won't discuss the Dan Beaver problem here or the unbearable situation in Smith Valley. But we will go on to the, uh, somebody got it, got it late. All right. Elected officials reports.
Good morning. Margie Castbaum, One County Recorder.
Is her mic on? I can't really hear you.
I'll speak up.
There you go.
Thank you. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm here to present my technology report for NRS two forty-seven, three oh six. It's an annual report we do. I handed out, um, my paperwork to you this morning. Um, the two things that we have coming up this year that we will be, um, doing will be a new recording access program that will allow the community to record from their home if they have a scanner. They could go to the library and record.
That's going to be nice.
That will be nice. And that should be coming within the next month. And then the next thing that we would be implementing will be the fraud, um, fraud guard. Where the, um, community can go on our website, put in their name, their parcel number, their address, and anything that records with any of those items. They will, um, get an email alert. So we've been, um, trying to get that for a while now and the, um, probably two thirds of the state, the recorders have that, um, option set up right now. So we're just trying to keep up with the technology that's coming and help the community. Do any of you have any questions on?
Thank you very much. I appreciate your work on this.
We also have that we are uh, going to, um, do a sample run on today is a recording station that we've set up in the Fernley Human Service at, uh, Fernley, I'm sorry, Dayton Fernley Services Building. Where the public can go in there also, and they'll be able to submit documents electronically over the scanner there to us. So that's, but, um, Chris is on her way over there right now. So we can do a trial run on that.
That's fantastic. Margie, you've done more for getting technology-driven initiatives implemented in that, in that section than I ever imagined possible. And, uh, I, I know, I thank you. I'm sure the community thanks you and, uh, wish you weren't going away quite yet.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Vita?
Yeah, Margie, um, just a quick question. Um, I know you're getting all this technology stuff on board. Um, in the city of Fernley, don't you already have it set up in, uh, Fernley to ours being able to record without going to Yarrington?
Uh, not yet. Vita, we're, we were going to do that after we have the Dayton one up and running. But this new recording access program that's offered through our Eagle Recorder through Tyler will be, um, available to all of the communities.
Okay, maybe, yes. I was just wanting to clarify because somebody had told me that, no, you've got something set up. And I'm like, okay. And then I'm listening to your report. So I'm like, okay, so do we or don't we?
We do in Dayton and, but, uh, we were going to put that in, um, Silver Springs, Fernley and the Dayton area. Until we realized that there's this new program that Tyler is offering us that anyone can use, anyone in the public can use it.
Fantastic. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Gentlemen. Come on up there, Mr. Villanueva. The lines, I, I can never get it right.
That's okay. I get that all the time. Good morning, Sheriff Alliance, Line County Assessor for the record. For NRS two fifty dot zero eight five, I'm submitting the following report. I'll sweep over the statute honor before July first of each year. The county assessors shall submit to the Board of County Commissioners a report of the project, projected expenditures of the money in the account for the following fiscal year. Any money remaining in the account at the end of the fiscal year that has not been committed for expenditure referred to the County General Fund, which Josh is pretty happy about. So. Um, from my report, um, you'll, you'll see under, um, vendor name and some item descriptions. Um, just be aware, probably in July, I'll be coming forward with a, a new contract, um, with, uh, an arrow imagery company that we've been using since, uh, when I say two thousand four, um, and it'll be a five-year flight program. So we'll be able to, uh, take imagery of the five different market areas within the county. Um, also, um, with the tech fund, we were able to purchase, um, just recently, um, we're going to be issuing, um, exemption cards for exemption holders. So we're pretty excited about that. Um, what will, uh, what will happen? We have a little over thirty-five hundred exemptions, I'd say about ninety-five percent of those are veterans, you know, so they'll be able to use this card to go to DMV or, um, we'll have our website also. They can check their balances on our website as well. So with that, uh, entertaining questions.
Well, it doesn't look like anybody up here. You have some?
Just appreciate the report. Thank you, sir.
And Troy, can you go into a little bit of depth real quick on that? So people understand what you're actually doing with those exemption cards and how it's actually going to streamline the process and make it better for easier?
So, what has happened in, for the last couple of years, we've had, um, people moving from other counties that already issued those cards, Wash Up, for example. And what that do, it, it, it has a card. So it streams like a pro, streamlines the process to where they do go into the DMV, they can give it DMV, they can bring up their account and everything moves quicker, but also saves money on our end because, uh, as far as mail goes as well. But it'll streamline, uh, definitely for all exemption card holders.
Yeah, they gave me a little bit of a tour this morning on the new process. And if you're a veteran or disabled veteran, you get a, uh, an exemption card for your DMV fees. And every year, it's always been a paper card. The DMV, every time you go to the DMV, they would confiscate the card. It was kind of hard to figure out how much of an exemption you had left or anything. And it, you, you had to remember the number. It was just a really screwy situation. Now they're replacing it with a nice little plastic hard card that you will maintain in your possession forever going forward. And it just, yeah, it, it really streamlines the process and, uh, it's going to reduce the mailing. I mean, what's it cost to mail, uh, those cards every year now? Like thirty cents each or something? So that's
Yeah.
They all over a thousand bucks a year just to mail those.
As well. It'll pay for itself eventually.
Yep. So, so thank you guys for, for doing that. It's, it's good to see this stuff. Now, if we can only get the utilities department to allow us to, uh, set up online, uh, bill payment, but that's a whole other subject. All right. Any other elected official reports? Sheriff? Thanks, Troy.
Um, Sheriff Frank Trowell for the record, a couple of things. You guys talked about traffic safety and stuff like that. We've been working on a number of OTS events, office traffic safety events, um, for the last few weeks. Uh, I know this last weekend, my people were down here, uh, in force and speed limits sign or speed limits on three, three, nine.
Frank?
Yes?
Can you speak more towards the microphone?
I don't think that mic is picking up very well.
Thank you.
Um, so we, we're working a number of OTS events throughout the county. We were, this last weekend, um, they were down here working the south end of the county. We got some clicker ticket events coming up that we're working with some other agencies on. So we're doing, doing as much of that as we can. Uh, another important fact is over the weekend, we took one point two pounds of methamphetamine off the streets, thanks to, uh, the actions of our, our dogs. Uh, so Deputy Sukup and his dog Kai with, uh, did a traffic stop and, and ended up with a pretty significant drug seizure out of that. So that's a good thing. My brain just went blank, but, um, so we got that stuff going on. Um, just hired two more people this week. So we've got two more people starting. Um, that's a positive thing. Um, we're also working on some other speed issues throughout the area, working with this fine gentleman sitting next to my left here, um, trying to get some community involvement in helping us to, uh, set up some speed scenario solutions and, and some residential areas throughout the county. So, so I'm not going to tell you what that is yet, but, um, but we are working on some stuff as some community members to put, put that together. So um, outside of that, um, we're just, uh, very busy throughout the county. Every time I get an opportunity, I just want to say thank you to everybody that works for the Sheriff's Office for the phenomenal job that they're doing. And, uh, I'll open it up for any questions if anybody has anything. Uh, my last comment I would make, Commissioner Hawke, they brought it up. We are having a significant, uh, wildlife issue throughout the county. Um, Fernley's not exempt. A few weeks ago, one of my deputies actually got bit by a bear in Fernley. Um, well, a young cub got hit on the road. Deputy went to remove the cub from the road, cub turned around and bit him on the leg. Um, so it's not, it's, it's a problem that, that everybody needs to be aware of. And, uh, we work pretty closely with the Department of Wildlife and trying to come up to, to solutions to that. But just, uh, as a public safety measure, I would just advise everybody just be very careful when you're dealing with the, with the bears that are coming out of hibernation. So other than that.
You, you guys are doing a, a great job. Thank you. Now, the bearer that was hit, the cub, was that in Fernley, you said?
In Fernley.
Because wasn't there one in Dayton also that was, uh, kind of in the same situation? I, I don't, I didn't hear about Deputy getting bit, but
Yeah.
there was a cub that was bitten, uh, that was hit in Dayton as well.
Yeah, I know. The one that got the, the bit Deputy Taffamar was in Fernley.
He shouldn't have bit him first, though.
Just a quick question then, as far as your response to situations like that, because I, I believe there, you know, deputies did show up because a call was made the first night that the, uh, up on Deer Pass Road. I guess the deputy showed up and basically said it wasn't their problem. So, uh, they, they don't know whether they called, called Endow or tried to get someone to figure out what to do. But when I called Endow, the first response was, we haven't heard anything from that area. So you're the first one calling. And I said, well, I know I'm dealing with a lot of different people up there that are having problems. So.
I can, I can work on that, at that piece and see if the message is getting relayed from our dispatch center. Uh, on that, I mean, turn back the time clock. At one point in time, the Department of Wildlife used to issue us rubber bullets to deal with the bear problem. That doesn't really happen anymore. So what they, what they prefers us notify their bear people. And then they do, like you said, set up a trap or something. So we don't have the reason to do that. But I, but our people should be able to go out there and at least do the same thing you did, scream at them, yell at them, whatever. Um, and try to get them to, to elude the area. But most of these bears, just from my experience, might chase them away now, but by tomorrow morning coming, they'll, they'll be back unless, unless they get pushed out of there for some reason. So I'll look into that.
Okay. Appreciate it. Cause I was up there several nights and, uh, did see the bears every night. So they are up in the area. I think there's a retired law enforcement guy down from where I was. And he was out monitoring because they're tearing stuff up. Uh, and I figured since they tore up several of this lady's mouse boxes and ate the poison bait inside, that they probably wouldn't be around anymore. But I think they liked it and kept coming back to eat more.
I, I know, I know we've had a couple of calls in Wellington, too. Um, and we've been in, in, in some yards and houses in, in Wellington. So they're, they're definitely out there. So.
Thank you. Is Keller anything? Okay.
No, I'm good.
Thanks. All right. Uh, moving on to appointed officials.
Good morning, Andrew Haskin, Line County Community Development Director for the record. Um, I wanted to let you know that we are addressing a, an issue that I, I know the board has brought up multiple times and um, that we've had discussions on about cabs and getting the staff reports out. Um, part, so part of, I'm, I start off by saying that part of the challenge with that is that we're only one of the reviewing agencies. We have to send those reports out to state agencies and others. And so it takes a while for that stuff to come back. And so it's difficult to get that report done, um, prior to the cab meeting. And we do our best and a lot of times we do, we are able to get that out, but, um, sometimes we just can't. So one of the ways that we're going to address that in the future is, um, we're going to create a form that's a part of the application. Louis Carriola came up with this idea and, um, you know, we've worked with Rob on kind of figuring out what should be in that form. But essentially, when somebody fills out a planning application form, they're going to have to fill out, uh, citizens advisory board information sheet that has all the basics about the project, a brief description, a map of where it is, uh, kind of, you know, which roads are being accessed by the, the project. And, um, you know, just some very basic information that'll give the, the cabs enough information to, um, to be able to provide the board, um, with some, some direction on that. Uh, so, um, just wanted to let you know that's something that, that we will be implementing. I think we'll meet you next week to kind of fine tune what's going to be on the form and then, uh, get it rolled into our packet and get that updated. So I wanted to let you all know.
Hey, for community development? Ms. Keller, you saw online? Not soon.
Oh.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, actually, I'm going to go to David. He's got his hand up.
Good morning, Chairman Gray, Commissioners, David Burkett for the record. Um, I'm glad you brought up, Commissioner Gray, I'm glad you brought up utility billing. Um, we are undergoing a software update, a big major update with our software in the beginning of June. And one of the things we have been talking with the vendor, um, about what package we would need to, you know, come up to the twenty-first century here with, with, you know, the ability to email out bills. So that discussion has been had. And hopefully within the next couple of months, I'll be able to bring you back some information on that.
Can you, uh, while you're having that discussion, can you also see if there's an ability to pay outside of, uh, the, you know, you guys being able to reach into people's checking accounts where they can just pay online?
Um, it's that, we, we've had that conversation and nothing has changed on that end. It's, it's, it's between the banks. It's not the utility department. That's between the banks. The, uh, a couple of other things I wanted to bring up just real quick was, uh, just so you're aware, um, we did a waterline replacement project on Highway fifty, uh, at the fall of last year. We were not able to complete one component of it, which is the final sealing of the, of the asphalt, just because of the temperature conditions. So they were able to get that done. Temperatures warmed up. We're now finishing the slurry seal on Highway fifty, uh, just north of uh, Dayton Valley Road. So they're doing that actually today. So this morning around, um, six o'clock, they shut down the number two travel lane and, um, that'll be down for maybe till about three this afternoon, then everything will be opened back up and then that project will be completed. Um, and then as a follow-up to some comments Jeff made earlier, you know, about supply chain issues. Um, just to keep you in, aware, the lift two, which is the sewer project that we have going on in Dayton, uh, along Dayton Valley Road. Um, same, same issue. The, the contractors running supply chain issues and, um, they're not able to get some of the parts. Is part of the requirements of our loan that we took through NDEP. Um, all the parts have to meet what are called AIS, um, compliance or American Iron and Steel. And, um, they're not able to get the parts. So we're doing everything that we can in conjunction with NDEP. Uh, there is a waiver review process, uh, that we have filed with NDEP. It ultimately goes to the EPA. It is an extremely long and onerous process, but we are, we've initiated that process. But if the contractor cannot get the parts, then likely within the next week or two, there's a likelihood that that project will have to be shut down until the projects, uh, or until the parts can come in. So I'll keep you updated as I know more. If the project is shut down, it'll likely lead to change orders. Um, so we'll deal with that as that comes forward, but I just want to make you aware of that. That's all I have. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions for the board? Alrighty, thank you. All right, Mr. Foley, here it comes.
Good morning, Joshua, Line County Control for the record. A few things to update you on, since the board took action on the ARPA funds. I have sent out subrecipient agreements to every entity that needs one. And they will be on your July seventh agenda for approval on our side. They should get approved by the other entities first and then will be the final approver, with the exception of Dayton Valley Conservation District. And we're working together to get all of the information, like a tax ID number and, uh, federal registration number that we need for federal grants with them. And so uh, just so you're aware on that, I've met with facilities after talking with County Manager. And we are putting together an RFQ for the architectural. We're doing two, one for the firmly justice court expansion, one for the man house community center. And we will do that process, uh, bring back to the board a contract with the recommended architect. And for each of those projects, may or may not be the same architect, depending on how the qualifications are done. The federal process on evaluating those RFQs is very specific. We have to have written procedures in place. Uh, follow those and there can't be any arbitrary decisions at all on that type of process. So once we, we get that process done, then we negotiate a price with that vendor. So once we, we get that process done, then we negotiate a price with that vendor. We bring that back to the board for uh, the board to award that contract. On the engineering side, I've spoken with. With Dustin on the two road projects with engineering done there and the fairgrounds, I've spoken with facilities. So they can go to the fair board. The county engineer, Far West, we went through an RFQ process when we selected them. And so I believe that that qualifies, so we don't have to do a new one for these particular projects. So those are moving forward as well. And all the other projects, I believe, are moving forward on the, on the ARPA funds. So in addition to that, budgets were filed with the state by July 1st. With that, once I get all the budgets from all the different entities, the cities, the fire districts and everyone else. We put together a tax rate resolution that the board of county commissioners has to certify and the state has to certify. And so that will come to your next meeting. So you'll have that coming up. Fee resolution, normally I do that in June. Unfortunately, this year we have a couple of fees on the planning side. The building side, really, for the most part, that we need the business impact statement to make modifications to. So that delays the process under state laws. We have to go through a, a process with that. So we're looking at the July 21st meeting to bring that fee resolution to the board and make it effective at that point. And then finally, the ink was barely dry on the budget and I received our notifications on how much the workers' compensation is going to cost us for the upcoming year. And it's going to be approximately $170,000 increase to line down over above what we had a budgeted. And so that'll be approximately $150,000 out of the general fund. I'll make a note of that. So out of contingency, we'll keep it, keep an eye on that. Majority of that increase in costs, line counties experience on what, what our costs are for claims. We have a significant number of claims through the sheriff's office on a regular basis. It's not like we don't follow up on those. Human Resources does an after action instant review on every single worker's comp case that comes through. And works with the departments, find anything we can address and make our process better. Just wanted to update you on those. Besides that, I'm done with my report unless you have any questions.
Thanks, sir.
Commissioner Keller?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Josh. Hey. Uh, any other appointed officials? I see the DA's office ran away. Okay, um, we will go on to advisory board reports. We're going to do uh, the review of the citizens advisory board compliance for 2022. Aaron, I think that you, right?
Aaron Lopez, for the record, um, as you have in your packet, the advisory board compliance for the year, do you have any questions for me of its content? So the ball's in your court. If you wanted to forward on anything in there, um, you can let me know. As far as that, I had offered to the assistance advisory boards to meet with me monthly. My idea behind that is that we could have a more teamwork approach. So that they can all get together and air out any concerns, problems that they're having. And hopefully, we could do more training so that we'll, if they can all work together and we can have conversations. It can stop the redundant questions, so that if they can work together, if they hear someone's problem, make sure that there are other, from problems from having. From problems from happening. And that we can get together and start hopefully getting some of these issues resolved. It is open to all the advisory board members to participate. So it's not just the chair, the vice chair, or the secretaries. I want everyone to be involved and hopefully they can start having, developing more relationships with the other advisory board members. So they can reach out and talk to each other if they have any other problems. So that is my goal there. So I hope that the advisory boards get back to me a report with a time that they can meet. I want it to be a standard time monthly. So say it's the first Monday every month at nine o'clock. They know that they can zoom in and we can have some conversations and more of a staff training. And help, see if we can help mitigate any issues. So any questions for me on that?
Byda?
Uh, just a comment, Aaron, I just wanted to show my appreciation. I know how hard it's been. Pulling everything together with the, the cabs. And I just think you've done an awesome job and you've stuck with it. I know it's been frustrating, but uh, anyways, just, just want to commend you for continuing to move it forward and make it better.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And Aaron, I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to take you up on that offer right now and just schedule it if we could for the uh, stagecoach advisory board. If we could just schedule maybe an hour before their next meeting next month. That way, nobody has to juggle their schedule around or anything like that. If we could all sit down and uh, go through, cause I know they've got answered, they've got questions for me, they've got questions for you. There's, you know, little, they're in that a whole storming, you know, storming, norming and performing uh, cycle right now with all the new members and stuff. So if we could just wanted to put that on the schedule, I'd be appreciative.
So just make sure I understand that's right. Prior to their next meeting.
Prior to their next.
Call us to sit down and have any conversation.
Just, yeah, in, in uh, in stagecoach, that way, if you could, just stay over for their meeting and make sure that they're, they're running it the way they should be. Cause I know there's a lot of trepidation on their point, because some new members, some old members, um, so if we could do that, I'd be appreciative.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. Alrighty, uh, going on to the next item on consent agenda. Today's consent agenda consists of items 11A through 14C. Any changes, comments, concerns? Dave, you didn't find anything?
No.
Chairman Gray, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Uh, we're going to go ahead and uh, is there any public discussion at this point? Okay, all in favor of uh, approving the consent agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And let the record show, the motion passed by both. Okay, uh, moving on to the rip back to regular agenda. Item 15A, possible action appointed to two members to the Smith Valley Park and Recreation Board with terms expiring 31 December 2022. We have one application, Brittany Bennett.
Now I'll make the motion. To appoint Brittany Bennett to the Smith Valley Park and Recreation Board with a term expiring December 31st, 2022.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any public?
Yeah, I have just. It's, it's expiring December 31st of this year.
Yeah, right.
Well, I'm just making sure.
Okay, they're, they're on a cycle, you know, certain ones expire.
Right on.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Public comment? Okay, all vigor, all in, boy, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Uh, the appointment passes five oh, particularly. And we have been asked to take a break, so we will take uh. It's almost on the hour, so let's go to about seven after. Sir.
Typhoons.
I knew you would. I got, I got a poke at you. You've got an eye for detail like nobody's business. So now see, Byda, come back on. Commissioner Keller, are you back on? There we go. Okay, we're going to call this meeting back to order. Okay, we are going on to item uh, number 16A, and the county manager, possible action. Prover resolution of the Line County Board of Commissioners requesting the governor of the state of Nevada. To direct the Nevada Department of Transportation to implement safety equipment and processes on Highway 50 from Carson City Line to Ten Mile Hill. Mr. Page?
Mister Chair, before the board is the resolution that was requested. Uh, my, for the record, I did send it to Commissioner Gray to verify that it met the intent that he was wanting to do. He uh, made us some edits to it. And so before you today is the resolution addressing Highway 50. If it is passed, then we will be sending it um, to the governor of the state of Nevada. Postwit, so. So I have.
Anybody want to read it into the record and then we can discuss it? Your resolution, okay. Right. Okay, a resolution, Line County Board of Commissioners requesting the governor of the state of Nevada to direct the Nevada Department of Transportation. To implement safety equipment and processes on Highway 50 from Carson City Line to Ten Mile Hill. Whereas Line County Board of Commissioners recognizes the increased volume of traffic on Highway 50 between Carson City Line and Ten Mile Hill. And whereas the Line County Board of Commissioners have sent, I'm sorry, have seen firsthand and have received numerous citizen complaints. Concerning the increased traffic accidents resulting in serious injury and death on the section of Highway 50. And whereas there are a number of intersections that are unsafe for left-hand turns. And whereas there are a number of intersections that do not have acceleration lanes to safely enter Highway 50. And whereas the Line County Board of Commissioners does not have the authority or jurisdiction of the construction, maintenance, design or installation of safety equipment. On this section of Highway 50. Therefore, let it be resolved by the Lion County Board of Commissioners respectfully request that governor. That the governor of the state of Nevada to direct the Nevada Department of Transportation to implement safety equipment processes on Highway 50. From the Carson City Line to Ten Mile Hill, including installing traffic signals to enhance intersection safety for left-hand turns and reduce speeds. And still installing acceleration lanes to enhance safe access on Highway 50. And installing appropriate equipment to reduce collisions caused by crossing over and on coming traffic. And uh, the rest is administrative. Um, I've already been asked by a couple of people, why, you know, why not all the way out to Silver Springs? At this point, it's not included in there because there have been. At this point, it's not included in there because there have been, there have been upgrades to the highway out there where they created the dip and they've done other things out there that have reduced a lot of the problems out there. They really haven't done anything between between the Carson City Line and Ten Mile Hill to address the issues we've been having. So at this point, I'll open it up for a discussion. Or a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Gray. I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution before us as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion with the board, Mr. Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with what we're trying to do here. I just don't know if this is gonna be very effective. I just wondered, have we reached out and tried to set up a meeting with the governor? Have we, you know, tried to work with his office to do, I mean, because I'm gonna support this, but I'm not sure, like I said, this is very effective, and if, you know, somebody passes a resolution saying, you know, we're doing something and we get it, the first thing we're gonna do is probably just, yeah, whatever. So, I mean, I understand we're making a statement, but I'm just not sure this is the most effective way to actually improve safety on Highway fifty. And to, you know, I think we actually need to have a meeting with the governor on highway safety throughout Lyon County. So I'd like to see if we can't set that thing up.
Yeah, I'm not gonna disagree with you. We've seen where meetings with those offices have gone before. We'd actually asked them to attend the safety meeting that we had in Dayton. They were not, they were no show. And this is more of the statement. This is a request for them to actually do something. It's not, you know, condemnation, it's saying, hey, do something, and if, you know, if they want to meet with us, we'll meet with them, but we're just throwing the ball under their court at this point because we have no further authority on this one. Commissioner Keller, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'm just asking, why are we limiting it to installing traffic signals to enhance intersection safety? I totally understand the acceleration lanes. But I feel like we're limiting ourselves to only traffic signals when there's other avenues that can be taken by the state. I think the main thing is we just need NDOT to take action. But like you mentioned, the Silver Springs, Stagecoach area, you know, we've got high Ts, you know, the dips. It was designed completely different. I don't see why we couldn't go with some kind of, you know, the cabling and maybe even some high Ts for some of these intersections rather than more traffic signals, more, you know, slowing down traffic. You know, we're, a highway is to get commerce moving, and I feel like that we're limiting ourselves to one request.
Yeah, I'm not gonna disagree with you, but that's what their, that's what their plan had called for were, were some signals in there. And so we just, instead of them stopping and, you know, you know, going back and re-studying everything, we just, we put in the signals, and if there's other things they want to change and do, I mean, like I said, I know the public in general is not a fan of roundabouts. Personally, I like them because it does keep traffic moving, but I just wanted to kind of stick with what their plan is at this point and not ask them to reinvent the wheel again and add more time to the, to the issue.
Well, I'm not necessarily saying roundabouts, you know, there's.
No, that's what I'm saying. I would have.
As well.
I would have liked to have seen roundabouts in there, but like I said, I, it's a, it's a time over, it's a time over, what's it, what I'm looking for, a time over convenience factor, I guess, is what I'm looking at. We want them to do something and do something as soon as possible, and they've already got the plans for the, for the lights, which is why I'd left that in there. I mean, we can change if you guys want, but just.
Thank you, Chairman Gray. I can't say as I disagree with anybody, but I think the reason I'm supporting this is we've had people's lives affected through injury, accidents, et cetera. We've had a bunch of people contacting us, and this lets the general public know, I think, too, that we, we hear them, and we're moving forward with something. If we put everything to make Highway fifty in this resolution, you'd still be reading it tomorrow morning. So I don't think, I don't think an all-comprehensive fix-up plan is what, what I was looking for on this, but, but I think it does capture the fact that we acknowledge that people are getting injured, hurt, killed on, on this, during, through this corridor. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, one possible change could be on the, on the, therefore, where the installed traffic signals, afterwards, signals, we could insert or other traffic control devices to enhance intersection safety, and that would, that would address, I believe, Commissioner Keller's concern, and a concern I share, too. I'm not necessarily, I want to give NDOT a green, no pun intended, a green light to put up more traffic signals.
I see what you did there. Yeah, no, that's fine. It's just, like I said, their plan had already called for signals, but, I mean, anything. And I think the other thing, like the cables, VITA, that was under the install appropriate equipment to reduce collisions caused by crossover. So, I mean, we've talked about, you know, we've talked about high Ts, we've talked about cabling, we've talked about K-rail, we've talked about, you know, the, the concrete, just something out there that's gonna keep people from going into head-ons when somebody's being stupid or loses their, you know, loses control of their car from a mechanical failure or something.
Well, you keep referring to, you know, plans that are already been drawn up, and my experience with NDOT and working with them for twenty-something years now, plans are subject to change. I just don't want to limit anything, you know, they say, come back and say, hey, well, we'd rather do this, but you asked for a traffic signal. I want to agree with Commissioner Henderson to make that change because anything we try to do is gonna take time. If they come back and say, hey, we can do this, we could do it now, I don't want to stop them.
Yep, no, I agree. I just, I don't want to see them drag their feet and say, well, we need to study this again. So whatever we need to do, I'm okay with that change. Jeff, did you catch that change? Does the motion still stand?
Motion stands with that change.
And the second still stands? Okay, any further discussion? Any comment from the public? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Let the record show the motion carry five zero and the resolution passed. Thank you, guys, and that was, that was a good change, so thank you, Vida, thank you for your input as well. And we are now moving on to item number.
Team B.
I remember sixteen B. And I can't find it. Where? Nice. Item sixteen B, possible action, approve, deny, approve, deny, or amend a resolution, Lyon County Board of Commissioners terminating a declaration of emergency that was declared in Resolution twenty dash oh five. For the record, that was two thousand twenty oh five, two years ago.
Good morning, Jeff Page, can you manage for the record? This is a housekeeping item. The governor has rescinded the declaration of the British Union State of Nevada in regards to response to COVID nineteen. This is just putting up paperwork for our record, as well as we'll send a copy of the declaration to the Nevada Division of Emergency Management, letting them know that we have cleared it up. At this point in time, understanding we've gone from pandemic to epidemic, and so there's no reason to have these emergency plates or any of the requirements that we have within the resolution for the operation of Lyon County. If you have any questions, I'll be more happy to answer them.
Yeah, the only comment I have on that is this should have been done twenty-two months ago, wherever it was. So it's, I have nothing, anybody else on the board having? Mr. Keller? Okay. Saying no comment, any public comment? Okay, all in favor of passing?
Would you like a motion?
Yeah.
I, you know, I will. All right, let's hear a motion. Let's throw out a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve resolution of the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners terminating the declaration of emergency that was declared on Resolution twenty dash zero five.
We have a motion and four seconds. How anxious I am to pass this one and get out of this emergency. All right, any public comment? Saying now I'm gonna call for the vote, all in favor of this resolution terminating the emergency, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'm not even asked for opposed to pass this by though. Okay, going on to item number sixteen C, possible action, direct county manager and staff to initiate the planning, zoning change, building use, and design of the, for the Mount House Community Center. Mr. Page.
This was requested by Commissioner Gray at the last board meeting. We've already, we already started the process a month and a half ago in regards to the planning, zoning change that will be required that goes to planning commission this month. Fourteenth of June, and then it'll be coming to the Board of Commissioners in July. Mr. Foley's already outlined for you with that process effect with the architect and those kinds of things. We will be hiring, maybe the same architectural firm, but we two separate RFUs. I'm going through the federal process to make sure that that's taken care of, so we're just, it's on the agenda for you to give us directions to go ahead and proceed forward.
And can you please, once this motion, or whoever makes the motion, reach out to the Mount House Community Advisory Board and get their input on what they see as?
Most definitely, we will put you, I do want to caution the board. This is, not only is it a county project with federal funding, sort of process we need to go through. And so we participate in having the community involved in the process, letting us know what they want. But also, we have some requirements we have to follow that we've already been. We have some processes.
Okay, but I mean, they've consistently said they're not asking for the moon. They don't want the moon. They don't want a ten million dollar Taj Mahal. So if they don't want it, they don't need it, let's not waste the funds on it.
I understand, but they've also almost had a contractor hired, ready to go, so.
No, they didn't. No, they were trying to, they were trying to find somebody to be willing to.
The email I had. This is who you're gonna hire. No, that's not how we.
Okay, now that's, then they way overjumped again, so, okay. Any further discussion with the board? Everybody want to make a motion? Do we need this? I think we need to make it de-formal as it is. I mean, I'll make the motion if you don't want to.
I'll make a motion to direct the county manager and staff to initiate the planning, zoning change, building use, and design for the Mount House Community Center.
I'll second it. Okay, any further discussion by the board? Any discussion by the public? Okay, all in favor of the motion as presented, Doug Homestead just raised his hand. Sure, Doug, way to sneak in there at the last second.
I just wanted to let you know this, Doug Homestead, for the record, facility director. I've met with Mr. Foley, and we're laying out a process of selecting the architect. And I also reached out to Melinda and told her what we're doing, so I'm keeping her informed in the whole process.
Thank you, Doug.
That's all I have to do.
And it doesn't necessarily have to be in Melinda Cash. I mean, there is, there is an advisory board there, so. That's all I get. Okay.
My email has been through the, through the cab.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye. Anybody opposed? Motion passes five oh. Thank you. Okay. Oh, yeah, look, everybody hold on to your wallets, here it comes. All right, item seventeen A, possible action, approve a resolution establishing the opioid settlement fund.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Councilor, this is to establish your wallet for the.
Any questions from the board? And looking for motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to, do we approve a resolution establishing the opioid settlement fund?
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the board? Any public comment? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. Seventeen B, approve a resolution to augment the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two fare and rodeo fund budget of Lyon County, and they established, I'm sorry, an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Councilor, for the record, so the fair and rodeo ended up with significant more attendance and revenue, and they raised some of the fees for that. And so we ended up with additional revenues we can augment. We need to augment for a few different purposes, but not the least of which is some of our contracts are tied to the revenues that we receive, so if we receive more revenue, we have more expenses or expenditures in this case. And so we've exceeded the budget because of contract required us to. And so this is really kind of a formality to bring it back to the board and say, hey, we have the money, we have to spend on expenditures, and this is just to make the budget balance out.
Any questions? Motion.
Chairman Gray, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution.
What number is it? Seventeen B.
Seventeen B, to augment the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two fare and rodeo final budget for the Lyon County fare and amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any public comment?
Real quickly, just a correction on that motion, I believe Commissioner Jacobson said final, and it just says the fund of the Lyon County. Does that matter? Okay, I just didn't want to mistake in the minutes later.
I'll amend my motion. I forgot my glasses. Thank you.
Problem. I could have easily done it myself.
So we're trying to make sure the minutes reflect that it's the fund, not final budget. Hey, any public comment? Saying no public comment, we'll take the vote, all in favor of the motion as presented with the change, signify by saying aye. Okay, let the record show, item seventeen C passed, five oh. Item seventeen D, possible action, adopt resolution authorizing the transfer of funds. We're seventeen. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, well, there's a, I think there's a reason I wanted to skip seventeen C. Item seventeen C, approve a resolution to augment the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two road fund budget of Lyon County, an amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Councilor, for the record, so we had budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for a piece of equipment last fiscal last fiscal year, and for some reason, this supply chain didn't give it to us last fiscal year, so a hundred thousand dollars of this request is really just timing. We ended up not spending the money last fiscal year, so the cash ended up in the ending fund balance, beginning fund balance for this year. When we get the piece of equipment, we'll have to put it in the budget year of when we actually receive the item. So that's a hundred thousand. While we're at it, we had enough fund balance to do twenty-five thousand, which will take care of one of our largest expenses, which is fuel increases for the road fund and repairs and maintenance. And so those are, that's what the twenty-five thousand is worth, cover some of those services.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, Josh, just, I'm just trying to clarify. The agenda item says the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, but my backup. Am I reading it wrong? It says a hundred and twenty?
Yes.
It does, so if we will, anywhere where it says twenty, or a hundred and twenty thousand or twenty thousand, it said five thousand to that.
Can we do that? That's a, that's more than what the agenda item requires. Okay, okay.
The agenda item is correct, but the, the resolution isn't.
So is that, is that okay to do that, Yulia, if the two don't match up to go with the higher amount? On the agenda item. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. And Vida, you get the bonus point for that today. I would have expected Commissioner Hawkeye to get that bonus point.
My, my question was gonna be, we're talking twenty-five, and then all of a sudden we're talking five, so you're gonna get a question on me on there.
There you go.
That was.
Okay, so we did catch the motion and the second, correct, or we did not? Okay, we need, we're looking for motion. Vida, you still have your hand up? Did you want to say something?
Well, now I just got a question. In that motion, do we need to clarify that?
I would say we do the motion for what the agenda item says, and I will provide revised backup for that with the twenty-five thousand additional to be in services wise and the fund balance to be increased.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, looking for motion.
Mr. Chair, I've moved that we approve a resolution to augment the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two road fund budget of Lyon County in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any further board discussion? Any public comment? Okay, we'll go ahead and call for the vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion passes five zero. Now we will go on to item seventeen D, adopt a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from FY twenty twenty-one and twenty, FY twenty twenty-one, FY, no, boy, I cannot even get this one out. FY twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two from various line items, including contingency within the general fund and capital improvements fund as authorized by NRS three fifty-four dash five nine eight zero zero five. within the general fund and capital improvements fund as authorized by NRS 354-598005.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Councilor for the record, so this is a summary of actions the board has taken over the year. There are a handful of other items as noted that are not items the board has considered previously. And I put the reasons in for those. And then in the, in the capital improvements fund, we budgeted originally for public safety function for the remodel upstairs of the, at the public's, public safety complex. Well, that's going to be judicial because it's all district work on the second floor. And so that's just taking care of pressing new tees and bonding.
Thank you. Any questions from board? Mr. Keller, any questions?
Chairman Gray, I make a motion that we approve the, approve, I should remember my glasses. Adopt a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from various line items, including contingency within the general fund and capital improvement fund as presented by Mr. Foley.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion with the board? Any public comment? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Vada, are you aye?
Yeah, aye.
Okay. Okay, motion passes five oh. Item seventeen E, possible action, approve debt management policy and capital improvement plan for, for 2022-2023 Lyon County debt management policy, Mr. Foley.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Councilor for the record, this is one we are required by statute to do each year. The debt management policy doesn't contemplate any new debt other than the existing $20 million loan, state revolving loan that we are drawing down. It's anticipated a lot about $4 million on that in this policy at June 30th of the 20 million. And then the capital improvement plan, the first year by statute has to match what the budget was that we just passed, and it was. And so you have all that information before you, and I'm open for any questions.
Any questions from the board?
I did have one. And I, I know I, I I actually looked at the agenda online, so I don't have notes, which is always bad, but what is our? We have bonding availability out there, what is that figure? It was just staggering.
It's insane, and I would never recommend that we actually go to that.
I, I understand, I just wouldn't, wouldn't underreckon what it is.
Availability, availability, 213,199,860. Now, how you would actually ever have enough revenues to pay that debt? I have no idea, but that's what the statutes allow is up to 5% of your assessed, or 10% of your assessed valuation.
Really have to pay bills back? What a concept.
What a concept.
That's one question. Okay, thank you.
There's a big, big chunk.
Yeah, it's crazy. Good promotion.
I'll make a motion to approve the debt management policy and capital improvement plan for 2022 through 2023.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further comments by the board? Any comment by the public? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five oh. Thanks, Josh. No horribly bad news today, really, thank you, thank you. Okay, moving on to community development, Andrew Haskins, item eighteen A, possible action, propose an ordinance to man Lyon County Code Title 15, Lyon County Land Use Development Code, Chapter 15.320, Section 3, Table 15.320-1, Chapter 15.320, Section 3, Table 15.320-2, Chapter 15.335.03, Section WW, in order to restrict recreational vehicle, boat and personal storage uses along Nevada State highways and to clarify performance standards for uses and other matters pertaining thereto.
All right, good morning, Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Community Development Record for the record. I want to start off by saying that, just kind of addressing these ordinances, because we're gonna have a series of them coming up. Before they're proposed, they're in draft form. I, obviously because of open meeting law, I can't call each of you and find out what you would like to see in an ordinance. It's a little bit different when we're working with the commissioner that has requested an ordinance, but a lot of these are going to be staff, staff initiated, so I just want to throw that out, we are looking for input on this. It's not, it's, you know, it's not necessarily in final format, this is just staff suggestion on where to go with this. So, you know, I would really like suggestions if this is not the direction that the board wants to go in. That's the purpose of this discussion, really. You know, if it's something that is easily, easily amended in there, if it's just something minor, then we can do that as a part of the motion. If it's not, you know, we can table it, work on it, bring it back. But this is really kind of the first step in, in these ordinances. So just to kind of, so just to kind of talk a little bit about this particular ordinance, the self-storage and RV storage ordinance. This is one that I am recommending. And it's because since I've been at Lyon County, we've had at least 30 different people come to the community development department with either, you know, requesting either roundtable for self-storage or RV storage, or to ask about information on what it would take to develop self-storage and RV storage. It's, it's certainly a need in the community, I'm not saying that, and I don't want to eliminate self-storage or RV storage by any means. I just think that we need to take a look at where we're allowing it, how we're allowing it, and really kind of address things for the future, I'm trying to think 20 to 30 years down the road and, you know, one of the thing, you know, we have tried to decide whether or not we want our communities, which for the most part, all of them have highways as their main street, whether or not you want to see nothing but self-storage or RV storage along those main thoroughbys. So I'll get right into it, so the proposed ordinance here would basically amend the sections of Title 15 that were discussed in the, in the agenda item. And it basically says, no outside storage other than storage of RVs, boats or other items specifically approved for a conditional use permit is permitted in the neighborhood commercial, community commercial, regional commercial, commercial mixed use, highway mixed use. We took out the service industrial there and, or employment mixed use. And then the second part says that self-storage and RV storage facility should not be located within 1,000 feet from the right of way of a Nevada State Highway. The other part of this is that it would change it from a permitted use in those zoning districts to a conditional use. That gives us a little bit more ability to, to review these projects, make sure that they're doing them properly in those commercially zoned areas where there could be potential conflict with other surrounding uses. We just want to make sure that they're, they're being done right, that they've got the appropriate screening, that they're meeting the appropriate standards and WW that was outlined in here, that, that focuses on the performance standards for RV storage and outside storage. And you can see here, here's the table updated again, where we would make that a conditional use rather than a permitted use in those areas. Wanted to provide a little bit of an example, this is something that's already in Lyon County, that is 1,000 feet from, from the, from Highway 50. I don't want to name names or anything, but I think this is a good example of driving past you, wouldn't even notice it was there. I didn't, I chose not to put a picture of an existing one that is closer, I don't want to shame anybody, that's certainly not my intent. So, but anyway, like I said, this one's even out of your peripheral view. Part of the reason for the, the thousand feet and we, you know, and taking a look at it, actually, I discovered this after we already proposed the, or brought this ordinance forward to the planning commission, but part of the reason for that thousand feet was just, we want to make sure that we're allowing for commercial uses along, you know, retail and that type of thing along the highways. And so if you take a look at, say, the Smith's parking lot in Dayton, that's about 650 feet from the highway to the back end of that property. I think anybody that's been there and shot there in a pretty busy time realizes that they could probably use a few more parking spaces. But, so that was kind of, kind of my thought process, honestly, but it was honestly a number that we, we just came up with. You know, there's, we discussed it at the planning commission, when that came up, you know, whether or not 1,000 feet was appropriate or appropriate or not. One of the planning commissioners had made the statement that they felt that that was too long of a distance. However, when we had the discussion on it, the other, another planning commissioner said, well, I actually like this because it, it forces them to use a side road rather than frontage access to the highway. So they felt from a safety standpoint, that made a lot of sense because you've got RVs and whatnot trying to pull out onto Highway 50 in traffic or 95A or any of the other highways. So they felt that, that the thousand feet was appropriate because you would have to use, use a side road. So with that, I can kind of answer any questions, like I said, I'm open to changes on this. We can lessen the distance, we can do certainly a combination of things where they would, you know, it could be either 1,000 feet or do some substantial screening around it, so that, you know, aesthetically it looks, looks a little bit nicer as you're driving through the main streets of the communities. One thing I'd like to point out, if you drive through Carson or Menon, Gardinerville, you know, all those communities, they don't really have a whole lot of self-storage right on the highway, there are a few, they're older. But they don't, they've changed that, that, so like I said, it's just thinking, thinking down the road and with that, I'll answer any questions or take comments, however.
Thank you, Chairman Gray, I just a quick question, do we have any applications for permits currently that are inside of this in Lyon County?
So current, I believe we do, and we're working through a couple right now. The applications would be grandfathered in, as would the existing buildings, we're not trying to shut them down. They would be allowed to continue on. So that's certainly, we're not trying to impact them at all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Have there been, have there been any complaints from citizens in Lyon County about storage units being right next to a highway?
No, I don't think so, again, this is me thinking 20, 30 years down the road. I don't, I don't believe that we've had anything, I could check with staff, but.
Yeah, just to address your comment about moving them off the road, so you don't have RVs getting on 50 or 95A. Well, you're still gonna have, you just got to drive through residential neighborhoods now to get to the storage shed.
Sure, yeah, and I was just.
Yeah, I, I, I understand your thoughts on this, but to me, this is a solution looking for a problem, and I'm really not in support of it at all.
Hey, you know, I'm gonna agree with, that's one of those, I'm gonna agree with Commissioner Henderson. You know, and if there is no side road, now they've got the expense of, you know, if they're set way back, they're like the one we were looking at, I didn't see a side road on either side. They're gonna have to cut a road, I mean, a long road to wherever they have to go, and it's gonna have to be engineered and blah, blah, blah. And the other concern I've got is, and I, I see what you're trying to do, and I appreciate it. I think we've got a lot of other problems in the community that we could be addressing that we hear about every day. Code enforcement being not only one of them, but one, two, three, four and five of them. But I just have a real hard time telling people, you know, what they can, can and can't do with their property. I mean, there's people have been sitting on property for generations looking for a use, and now we're limiting their use even further. I mean, what I would be amenable is to maybe coming up with some kind of a, a screening, you know, or a landscaping requirement to make it, you know, more appealable. Yeah. Anyways, but I don't like getting upsetting at 1,000 feet off the highway, I, you know, it just, to me, I think that's an owner's requirement.
Is there a number that would work for the board, or is it just something?
I think it should be, I mean, like the other, like other businesses, I mean, whatever the setback is from the highway, you know, whatever the law allows for, for egress and ingress from the highway. At some point, they're gonna have to get out and off the highway anyway. You know, so, I mean, there should be a speed, you know, place where they get up to speed to get on the highway, but I, I would be much more, you know, I'd be much more likely to go along with this if it were a way of, you know, basically screening it or making, making it, you know, having much better curb appeal, so to speak. And, you know, Washoe County, there are actually some out there, and I think the reason they're not coming to mind is because they do have more curb appeal as you drive through Washoe Valley, I mean, there's some new, brand new facilities there that have nice blocking, nice approaches. You know, they're just, they're really nice. So I just, I, you know, this, this one might be a problem, like I said, a solution looking for a problem that isn't really there yet, and I appreciate you looking forward, but as long as there's no problem before us right now, why don't we maybe look at fixing it without, you know, without throwing owner's requirements on books.
I want to answer Commissioner Henderson's question, yes, I have had complaints from the citizenry in Lyon County, specifically dealing with one particular location in Mount House, in a particular location in Dayton, and the challenge is, there is no screening, it's right next to the highway, it's an eyesore to the public. The specific one in Mount House, the racks and racks of jet skis and a variety of other things.
I know, but that's not a storage facility, though, that's, those are, that's a business, that's not a storage. That, well, that's, yeah, that's it, well.
Well, that's, that's still, so you're, to your point, code enforcement, we've had a number of code enforcement complaints on that.
So what is?
And that's where we're still investigating as to whether we're storing people's private property, which we suspect. And that's the challenge we have with any of these units is, I'm not worried about the folks we're building today. What I'm worried about is five years from now, when, I'll give you one example here in Mason Valley. Local resident built a huge, nice, beautiful storage facility, just as you're heading out of town, crossing the driveway. When she decides to sell that, and some person from out of state, an absentee landlord buys it, and there's no maintenance, there's no nothing with it. If you looked on Highway 50 in Carson City, that's how Carson addressed this problem long before it became a problem. They changed their code to stop or put in barriers, put them back further away from the highway. So it wasn't an eyesore to the community, that all you saw was miles and miles of storage sheds going down Highway 50. So I, I don't know that we're, we're trying to solve a, a, a bringing a social problem that's more problematic. The board doesn't like 1,000 feet, that's fine, and we'll sit down and discuss what we're going to do to, so that when you're driving down Highway 50 or 95A or 208 or 339, and you're driving through our community, drive out past, through a busker, drive out past through Mason, it's an eyesore. How do we address that so that the residents that live in the area, the people driving through, it doesn't look like we are, can't use that word of the public. But like we're poverty central. That, that's the concern that I think staff has is making it, making it more of an appetite that the community is a pleasant place to live, we don't have all these storage sheds just built on, right on Highway 50 or 95A or wherever else, and if we're gonna have them, that's fine, but is a board amenable to having some type of block wall, tree line, whatever it is, when we can go back and rewrite some of that ordinance to address that issue?
I think that would be an excellent, yeah, an excellent, uh, Mr. Chair, good point.
I understand somebody, thank you, and, and Mr. Page, I understand you might have had isolated complaints, I don't think it's a widespread issue, or the, the, the citizenry of the county is clamoring about this, however. But the point I want to make is that after listening to this, I'm still opposed to the, the, the distance limitation. I, I may be more inclined to support changing it from a permitted use to a conditional use permit, and that can address some of your screening requirements, but I know if I'm gonna store some of my property, I'd like to be able to go down the highway and turn right and go into the facility and not, and, and personally, I don't mind driving by storage sheds, they're, they're pretty much well maintained on, on the fifth quarter, so that, that, that's just my point.
And the, the other point I, I want to make that, I, it slipped my mind is, you know, a reason a lot of these people have these places, especially along the highway is, you know, you're storing valuables out there, safety and security, the farther back you move them, the more isolated they are, the more chance you are of running a risk. And, you know, you're, I, I think that is gonna inhibit, you know, their, or at least put added costs on their business model, but much, much more amenable to having, you know, something that conceals it, or, you know, makes it look better and not telling them they can or can't, I mean, I think a conditional use would be, you know, a way to go where they have to meet certain conditions to be able to do that.
Yeah, I think that's great, you know, and we are still leaving it as an allowable use and a permitted use in both light heavy industrial. Yeah, I think that's great. You know, and we are still leaving it as an allowable use and a permitted use in both light heavy industrial. So that was something that we weren't changing. It was really just along the, along the commercial uses. I hear you loud and clear on the, the distance thing. That's fine. Um, you know, we can make some changes to that, that what we can get rid of that portion of it, if that's the direction that the board would like to go in. So additional screening, block wall, landscaping, that type of thing is.
Yeah, I think that'll also help long-term also, because even the ones that are set back, right, you know, there's no guarantee they're not gonna become eyeswords anyway.
Sure.
So, I mean, if we've got them under conditional use and they have to maintain, you know, certainly, but Commissioner Keller's had her hand up. I just saw that. I'm sorry, Commissioner Keller.
Yeah, I was wondering if you were gonna get to me there. So I, I understand all the, the concerns, you know, we, we don't want to take people's rights, property rights away. But I was, maybe I'm missing something here. Andrew, uh, I'm reading through this and for the most part, it's not like we're taking anything out of the zoning from what I'm reading. We're making it a conditional use, correct?
Correct, but it would also, it would limit the use, that use within a thousand feet of a, a state.
Well, I'm, yeah, other than that thousand feet, so, but, but the rest of this is basically just addressing, you know, the concerns and the complaints that I've received. And, and no, I'm not gonna name names or which places, but um, I have actually received several complaints from around the county, not any particular spot um, about these issues. You know, we all hear the community and the citizens, you know, all the time going, hey, we want our, our communities to look nicer when we're, you know, when people are driving through, you know, what can we do to, you know, to clean them up and make them look better? And, and we have, you know, a, a few out there that, you know, they're, they don't do the greatest job. Um, to be honest with you, I wouldn't mind seeing something moving forward um, that even addresses some other commercial properties, uh, because we had a situation here in Silver Springs on a commercial property that wasn't even a self-storage or an RV storage, but they turned the whole commercial lot on the highway on a secondary road into a business slash storage to where they were literally storing the vehicles out in the middle of the road to where people couldn't even get to their homes. So um, I think this issue goes a little bit further than just the self-storage. But what I would like to suggest, I know we're only proposing this today. Um, what I would like to suggest is that, you know, uh, if you've got specific changes, um, let Andrew know what those are right now. Um, I think the conditional uses from permitted is definitely needed. And let, let's not let it just die because you don't like one thing. Let, let's change the one thing that you don't like.
Oh, that, I'll, I'll chime in. I, I kind of agree with, with Commissioner Keller there and, and if we, if we remove section twelve, the distance requirement, this is something I could probably support.
And change it to a conditional use?
Yes. And then, and just, just remove the distance requirement and change it to stay with the conditional use permit, the changes from the permitted use to conditional use and I can support that.
And we can create those conditions upfront. Can't we have all those conditions like the, the shielding or the, the block, the, you know, walls or?
Yeah, so, um, you, you know, if you look at, I included the, the foreordnance there and it has the, the entire section. So if you look at section ten here, it has some standards for outdoor screening or outdoor storage. Um, must be screened. I think, you know, the, the challenge is, so we end up with a lot of folks that, that want to use like chain link fence with the slats. The slats end up going, you know, they blow away, they get distorted by the sun and they don't end up working very long term. So, you know, if the board is okay with it, maybe tightening that up, that language up a little bit and block wall or block wall would be, I think, I think they're very appropriate. Some, something solid that's permanent.
The concrete slab walls, the, uh, yeah, called the prefab walls.
Yeah, and I think that would be more consistent with what a lot of the other jurisdictions.
So it's, Chairman Gray, it seems to me that we're making changes to this already when re- really we're just looking for a proposal.
Well, they, yeah, they want to propose it, I.
But we want to make sure we're proposing the right, the right thing, so.
Right.
So could, I, I'm wondering if we, uh, I'm wondering if we can table this and how do you guys bring back, you know, maybe a little tighten, more tightened up approach to it?
Yeah, we can include that language. I've made notes and certainly do it that way.
Well, that's what I was getting at. We're changing it and nobody's proposed it yet. Is that putting the cart in front of the horse? Doesn't it need to?
So, yeah, I mean, it can be proposed today with, with changes, but it might be cleaner to to bring it back with the changes in the ordinance so everybody can see exactly what it says.
And you said Fernley has a better, has a, has a good approach to it?
I, you know, I don't know specifically what they are. I know that that was a bit of a discussion at the planning commission. I, I didn't look up what they were, what they were doing. I can certainly take a look at that, but.
Can I, would anybody opposed me making a motion that we table this till next, uh, me, for next meeting or next month?
I mean, I could probably get the changes made the next, we have to have all the agenda stuff next Monday, so.
To the first meeting in July?
Yeah.
And so I, I'd like to make a motion that we table this till the first meeting in July with direction to staff to, uh, create conditions for the conditional use as well as researching what other jurisdictions have done to address this issue.
Okay.
And eliminate the distance requirement and eliminating the distance requirement.
All right. I had one other question for the board on this, just real quick. Technically, we can separate the outdoor storage from the self-storage. So RV and the boat storage from that. Do, is there any appetite to do that or?
You mean separating them is like not allowing them both on the same property?
Well, you can allow them both on the same property, but we can make different standards for each too. I don't know. There, you want to leave it? Okay.
Your money in the board.
All right, all right.
Okay, uh, so we have a motion and a second and Commissioner Keller.
Yeah, so why are we again going to the first meeting in July?
That's what Andrew asked for.
Do you really think you'll need that much time, Andrew? I mean, my understanding was we didn't want to kick the can down the road on this, so.
I, I just don't know that I'm gonna have time between now and when the agenda summaries are due on Monday, so.
So if we had it actually proposed to today with the changes, you could have just brought it back in July.
I, I certainly can, yes, that, that is true.
But he did also mention that he wanted to check into what other jurisdictions have done as well. So.
Yeah, I, I think, given that there's several changes that have been proposed, it might be better just to bring back the, the actual language. If the board's okay with that.
Any, uh, comment for the board up here? Okay, uh, we're gonna go to public comment now. Mr. Kui.
All right, thank you, Chairman Gray. So for the record, Phil Kui, I have talked to Andrew about this, so I think you guys have pretty much went over what my concerns are and that's the a thousand feet uh, with any U, US roadway. So I was looking at some of the facilities that I currently own. I have everything from about two hundred and fifty feet to the newest facility I'm building up in Mount House. It's an outdoor RV and boat covered, uh, storage. It's about a mile off the highway. I think, um, the problems that you're trying to address, I don't think can really be solved through this ordinance because it's not gonna clean up any of the grandfathered sites. And, you know, looking down the road twenty to thirty years, I mean, the way I look at it, the highest and best use may change um, out of storage and those facilities can easily be converted to something else. I mean, that happened in Dayton uh, with a self-storage facility that was over by the Depot Casino that they tore out and put in an RV park. So these facilities can easily be converted to a higher and better use when that time comes. That's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kui.
My name is Russ Wright. I still live in Dayton. Um, for those of you that haven't heard a complaint about self-storage or RV parks, here's one. We, we fortunately have a stoplight in, as you enter Dayton, gives you ample opportunity to look at the third world that we have encapsulated around that intersection. Uh, I would caution you not to hasten and do something today. I support two things. Mr. Henderson's comment that this is a solution looking for a problem. And as much as I'm reluctant to agree with Mr. Gray, that we postpone this until you have ample time to think about it and have Andrew do the proper research. I'll use the, the several visits to R for funding as an example of what happens when we react real quickly and decide today, then we come back next week and decide again, and then we come back in a couple of weeks and decide again. And finally, last Monday, we decided again. So I would, I would encourage you to give Andrew ample time to come up with something that's logical and, and meet some sort of consensus before we just rush into it today and say, well, maybe then next week we can readdress it and consider some of the things we should have considered before we considered it.
Thank you, I think. Okay, uh, any further public comment? Yeah, I'll, I'll call for the vote now. All in favor of a motion is presented, saying goodbye by saying aye, aye. Anybody opposed? Hey, we're gonna, that one passes by though. On to item eighteen B, possible action, proposed ordinance to Menland County Code Title fifteen. The Lyon County Land Use and Development Code chapters fifteen point six oh seven point oh one A, fifteen point six oh seven point oh four A, fifteen point six oh seven point oh four B, fifteen point six oh seven point oh five A, fifteen point six oh seven point oh five B, fifteen point six oh seven point oh six A, fifteen point six oh seven point oh six D and fifteen point six oh seven point oh six E to authorize the community development director to approve final subdivision map applications as allowed under Nevada revised statutes two seventy-eight point three eight zero.
All right, um, so this one came about after a recent a recent final subdivision map that had come forward and these are placed on the consent data, uh, consent agenda, the planning consent agenda. Um, there were some questions about wh- why it was coming before the board and and whatnot. So, you know, taking a look at NRS, NRS actually does give us, uh, gives the Board of County Commissioners, as you say, the ability to delegate the final map approval to the community development director. Um, so I spoke with one of the commissioners about putting together this ordinance, see, you know, if, if, if there was an appetite, commissioner said, bring it forward and see what the rest of the board said. So that's what I'm doing. Um, this is the section of NRS two seventy-eight, three, uh, three eighty that allows the governing body to delegate that to the planning or the community development director or the planning commission. Um, so you can see the underlying section there. Essentially, it would still go through all the same processes that it currently does. Um, the core of the zoning tax amendment is to provide a more efficient approval process for subdivision maps. All the same technical review processes by the state and local reviewing agencies that go into a final subdivision map review would remain in place. Uh, the only change would be the, um, to have what is currently a planning department consent item on the board of county commissioners' agenda, um, become an administrative approval, which would not require the applicant to wait for the application to be scheduled for a BOCC. The proposed zoning tax amendment would make for a more efficient use of the board commissioners and the community, uh, communities, development communities time for what is, uh, for the most part, an automatic consent action. All that applicable conditions of approval from the tentative subdivision map, uh, have to be addressed. This does not give me the authority to change those, um, conditions. They would still have to come before the board if they wanted to get a change of condition. All the regulatory concerns regarding water, sewer service, water rights, dedication would have to have been addressed and inadequate surety bond for the infrastructure improvements would have to be in place. The proposed zoning tax amendment essentially replaces the current language in chapter fifteen, uh, six oh seven. And the proposed code amendment replaces, uh, the board accounting commissioners, anywhere it says board accounting commissioners, it changes it to the community development director within those sections. I have it all listed out here in my presentation as to where the changes are made. They're pretty extensive, so if it's helpful, I'll go through all of these. If it's not, we, you know, I can kind of skip over this portion of the, of the presentation, but this, this is a good example. It just says, um, an application for final map approval. The director shall be the designated official. The board shall be the final decision maker for purposes of tentative subdivision maps and the director shall be the final decision maker for the purposes of final subdivision. So, so it doesn't change the tentative map process at all. The board would still be setting those conditions. So that's, I, again, I, unless the board wants me to, I don't need to go through all of this. Um, there is one, uh, section in here that I do want to point out that it does allow, um, me as the director to grant a single extension of two years. So we can change that. I see head shaking, but, um, that would be, you know, pretty rare, I think. So anyway, um, I, I'm happy to answer any questions on this one.
Thank you, Chairman Gray. Um, two things, my sec- my second part of the question might be for our DA, but so you, other counties are doing this?
To be really honest, I did not.
Okay, and that's fine if they are, I was just curious on that. And then, um, part two of that. So we get the final approval and they've met, they've met all of the requirements in the tentative. They've done everything. Their Ts are crossed, their Is are dotted. We deny that. It's in my short time, my experience is if we for some reason deny the final and they met everything, we get sued, we lose. So really, we're, at that point, we're just a rubber stamp for if they've met all the requirements.
Yeah, I mean, uh, the, the board is not allowed to add any additional conditions on to the, or the, onto the final map, so.
So, sorry, Mr. Haskins, but the, and then, so really what we're doing is we're speeding this up for the developers so they don't have to wait for a BOCC meeting. Because if they miss the agenda period, if they could theoretically be out three weeks from and three weeks, all right, so.
They would actually, so, um, planning items have to be heard in the county seat. Um, so unless it happens to be a planning item in the area where we're having the meeting, so let's just say that because the second meeting travels around, let's just say it's an item in Dayton. If the meeting happens to be in Dayton that month, then they could potentially be on the second board. So, yeah, it would extend it.
All right, well, for a rubber stamp at that point, anyhow, they've met everything in the, in the tentative. I'm, I'm all in support of this for sure.
Mr. Henderson. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, two comments. The, um, as far as the, the final map approval, I, I'm good with that. If all the conditions are met, that makes perfect sense. If there is a reporting requirement included in there where you or your successors have to come and report to the board that we, we approve these final maps. Uh, the second point is I don't like the idea of the community development director having approval authority over delays. I think that's something that should come back to the board.
So that's something we can certainly do. I mean, we don't, I, they have to meet a certain set of standards in order to get, uh, uh, an extension anyway, but that, that's certainly something that we can amend and change.
Those are my only comments. Otherwise, as, as, uh, Mr. Jacobson said, you know, we, we will prove tentative map conditioned that, maybe all those conditions, then yes, we're just delaying, delaying the, the onset of construction. So I don't have a problem with, with you or your successors approving the fundamentals.
And we already reviewed them in house too. I mean, they don't make it to the board if they're not up to standard anyway, so.
Yeah. Mr. Keller.
Actually, I think Commissioner Henderson just addressed it.
Actually, I think Commissioner Henderson just addressed it, my concern was making sure that. If there was any extensions or anything like that, that still came back to the board and then. Definitely reporting back to us, I mean, we do these tentative maps. And if it doesn't come back to us for the final, we're not necessarily aware. That they conformed, so I think a reporting process needs to be put in there, so.
Fair point.
I was just gonna speak up when Vita said her concurrence with the comments from Commissioner Henderson. There's a delay, they need to come back, cause then again, we're not worried about getting it done in a hurry, they want to wait, so let's make sure that gets in there.
Chairman Gray, so Commissioner Keller, I, and Commissioner Henderson on your point, so I guess it would come back in the consent agenda. For reporting only, is that how it would get reported to us, because I would think that if we're getting that information, the general public should get that information.
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily have to come back in the consent agenda, we can, I mean, we do a community development report every month or except. Last month, but, so we could, we could put that in the.
I was just curious how that was gonna come.
We could do it in the appointed officials report, I don't know if we need a separate.
And, if I may, just a technical question, can we. Propose the, the ordinance with the changes that we discussed, so don't have to delay this any further.
Yes, you can, so you can, you can make a proposal, somebody would propose the ordinance with the amendments as discussed by the board.
In that case, if you're ready, I'll be happy to make that motion.
What's proposal?
Then, Mr. Chair, I would like to propose in a, an ordinance to a Midland County Code Title fifteen as discussed with the changes as discussed by the board.
Exactly, it has been proposed. Do we need to take public comment on this, once it's been proposed or just when it comes back? I'll ask if we need to. I, I don't see that we have anybody having hands raised. Alright, we're gonna take five. If I'm running to leave or.
I'm not much for her politics, but.
Oh, I love her. I love them, nobody will outwork them ever, no one will ever outwork them.
She loves lemon drops. Just wait on, on, Mr. Keller.
She might be there.
I know, she's texting me.
I'm back, I got my coffee.
Sweet, alright, we will recommit going on to item eighteen C to adopt revision to chapter seven, public facilities and services. Of the twenty twenty comprehensive master plan update to include above ground utility quarters as required by Nevada revised statute two seventy eight point one six five, Mr. Haskins. You forget?
No, Rob Pizel's on and he will be doing this.
No, to deny, second. That, that's pretty funny, actually. Well, no, I just wasn't denying the ordinance, I was just making Mr. Haskins do it since he wasn't ready. Alright, Mr. Pizel, please. Thank you, for the record, Rob Pizel, Senior Planner. This is an amendment to the adopted twenty twenty comprehensive master plan, remember the update that we, we finally approved in December of twenty twenty one? This is a requirement called out in Nevada revised statutes that. As part of the, the process of final adoption of the, of the twenty twenty comprehensive master plan update. Was inadvertently left out and as such, we, we are recommending that the board adopt. The amendment to the master plan as proposed by staff itself. As you can see in the slides, it was originally created by the state legislature in the twenty thirteen session. That legislation then became NRS two seventy eight, one sixty five. It does require any master plan adopted by a local government has to include the designation of above ground utility quarters for electrical transmission lines. Designed to operate at two hundred kilovolts or greater. The designation was to be in cooperation with the, the state office of energy, the adjacent jurisdictions and the BLM. Next slide, please. And here's the, the state legislation, as you can see. Basically, it requires all jurisdictions within the Clark County and Washoe County areas. You see that pop cat, population cap in one A and B, it has to be adopted as part of the regional planning. Regulations for those two counties, next slide. On twenty fourteen, Planning Commission did recommend approval and the board approved a master plan amendment to incorporate. A section into the twenty ten comp plan and that plan included a map showing these designated corridors. And that brought the twenty ten master plan into, into conformance. The next slide shows the minutes from both the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners. Approving and adopting that amendment and off to the right, the far right, you can see the map was adopted as well. So again, it was inadvertently left out as part of the twenty twenty comprehensive master plan update. As such, we're bringing this forward, it would be added into chapter seven. And the Planning Commission at their May tenth, twenty twenty two meeting did voted unanimously to. For the recommendation approval for the board for this amendment. The next slide itself would show the, the goals and policies. That would be included into the. The facilities, the public facilities, chapter of the twenty twenty comprehensive plan. And then the next few slides just show the, again, what would be incorporated into the twenty twenty plan if adopted. The next slide is the, is the map itself, again, it reflects what was shown in the twenty fourteen. Plan as adopted. We would like to point out that it would comply with the proposed Greenlinks West. That's currently under, under proposed or proposed as part of the Greenlink Nevada and the energy project. As well as the Greenlink North lines. And with that, just, this slide is just detailed showing the area around that Fort Churchill substation. And with that, we'll try to answer any questions. Questions from the board?
Just one. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Pizel, the language that is proposed to be included as the same language that was in the twenty ten plan?
It does reflect the same goals and policies, there were no, no, no changes.
Thank you, I'm, I'm just, just a, kind of have a bit surprised as long as it took us to get the twenty twenty master plan adopted that we never realized that we omitted this, but. I'm sure that's something everybody just presumed it was in there.
Well, I do have to state that was mishap on my part after dealing with the general public, the advisory boards, the planning commission and the board. After taking the project up when Tammy Kinsley went to South Carolina, I was in a rush to get it done and, and it was my oversight. It, it happens. Okay, Mr. Commissioner, did you have something? Okay, let me go to Commissioner Keller first, Mr. Keller.
Yeah, Rob, just a question here, I mean, I know it was like in our goals in two thousand and ten. When they adopted that master plan, of course, they adopted it thinking that our county was growing even faster than it did. And so I'm looking at the NRS in counties whose population is a hundred thousand or more. We're still not there, we weren't there in two thousand and ten and we're not there today. So even though it was a goal to get there, is this something that, you know, by NRS, is what I'm hearing, is why we have to do this? Or do we really have to do this at this time?
Again, for the record, Rob Pizel, Senior Planner, all the local jurisdictions do have to include, include that as part of their master plan. You'll note that the population cap in section one A and B. Refer to both Clarkton and Washoe Counties and you'll see it has to be in coordination in those two counties with the regional planning efforts. That are required by state statute in both of those jurisdictions, but the local governments, if they do adopt a master plan. Do have to include these corridors, utility corridors as part of their master plan. Mr. Chair. I do want to remind the board, actually, there's two commissioners, I'll probably remember the late Mr. Dunlap. He used to comment on a regular basis that the only thing the county needs to do for master planning is include utility corridors, the rest of it's not necessary. So he, he will bring that up on a regular basis. Oh, how we missed the suspender brigade. Yeah, okay, Mr. Rock, do you want to proceed?
Need to turn your mic on.
Lo siento. I'm making a motion to adopt revision to chapter seven, public facilities and services of the twenty twenty comprehensive master plan update to include above ground utility quarters as required by Nevada revised statute two seven eight point one six five.
Second. Any further comment by the board? Any comment by the public? Hang on, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say goodbye by saying aye. Motion, the motion passes by though. Okay, going on to item number nineteen, Sheriff, possible action approved eliminating one vacant deputy position using the savings to upgrade three existing deputy positions to sergeant positions. And increase services and.
and increase services and supplies as well.
Sheriff Frank Tynwell, for the record, close to my pretty straightforward request. I mean, for the most part here, I'm up here to, if you guys want me to give you a sales pitch, I will. If not, I'll just ask any questions you may have. Tell you, I mean, fire away if you have questions. I mean, I can, if you want a little background, I can give you a little background. Basically, what I'm looking at is trying to retain what I have. We so I'm giving up a vacant deputy position is that and and people are going to say, well, why are you giving up the street level position? Well, I have seven open positions that we're actively trying to fill every three weeks. We're testing. I can't, I can't fill them. People just aren't showing up. Not that I don't want to fill them, but we're just not going to be able to show up for testing. So if I give up a one level or one street level position in being able to promote a couple more people within the agency. I mean, this goes back to, I'm not going to get into this too much. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago about retentions and salaries and stuff like that. And I know we can't go there, but not that I don't want to. I mean, I agree with every one of you guys, and we've had these conversations. I think we should, my people should be getting more money. Yes, I do. How we're going to get there? That the future will tell that. So what I'm trying to do right now is I'm trying to retain the people that I have in quality positions and by giving up one street level position and gaining three more supervisors out of it, that's part of that step. The other thing that we're trying to do is we're trying to line up our supervisory staff for not not today, but tomorrow in terms of having supervisors on duty twenty four seven. And this will help facilitate that because it gives me a little bit bigger gene pool to pick from as far as having those people available. Specifically. So you guys hear from me. Our detective division is consists of three people right now. Two of these positions would be to make all three of those detectives sergeants positions. In a perfect world, we would have it set up to where maybe through a contract negotiation or something else that there's a different step for detectives. We can't go there right now. The other part that this solves is when a detective gets called out to a scene, I don't have any question of who's in charge. Because right now a detective is is the same rank as a deputy in terms of of status. So and our detectives are doing a whole lot a lot more intricate, more detailed work than than the average deputy. So if I make those three get three positions in that in that all supervisor positions, then I I kind of squash some of the debate on who's in charge of the scene. And we tried doing that internally and saying, well, if the detective arrives on scene, they're in charge. Or any of you guys have been in the military know that rank structure does mean something.
I like, I see where you're going with this, Sheriff, but you know, in the military, I'll be the first point out, there's positional authority and there's rank authority.
Correct.
Senior Airman, a security, a secure, a senior airman E-Force, you know, security forces officer will outrank a Colonel on a crime scene any and every day of the week. If, you know, there's a situation.
I'm I'm not, I'm not questioning that at all. I'm not saying that that's not.
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering, and I'm trying to go back, where, why wouldn't they recognize the authority of a detective on the scene if a detective is necessary? That to me would say, you know, the detective shows up, the detective's in charge.
And I'm not saying it happens on a regular basis, but what the other part of this, I mean, there's a lot more to this story. If you guys want me to spend an hour up here and tell you the whole story, I will. Then just that piece of it. So on on cut and drive scene, somebody makes a calls out detective detectives arrive on scene. And I'm just using this as an example. There's no question that the detective is in charge. When somebody makes a phone call to the detective, the supervisor makes a phone call to the detective and says, I want you to come here for you are coming here no matter what, and it's not a not a scene that the detectives need to be at. Those are the instances I'm talking about. It's not specifically on scene. And that doesn't happen very often, but the other piece of this is I have to retain the detectives I have. If we end up with another case like Fern and and I lose my core group of detectives because they're not being compensated to what I believe they're worth, then we are in in a bad state of affairs. And and I got people that are talking about leaving this agency on a daily basis because of money. If you want to know my number one reason for doing this, so I can get those guys into into a pay ban that I feel that they earned and that they deserve. And 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 I can and I can keep them in spots. It's not just, I'm not asking for three positions just for detectives. One of these is a patrol position or so I get some more patrol supervisors too. The benefit to this is this. I will tell you right now, this may not be the best solution. The best solution would be a contract solution, but we know we're not going to be able to entertain that until twenty twenty four. So if and I mean, if if you want to copy somebody like Douglas County, Detective Division is set up to where they get a ten dollar an hour bump and they get a ten percent increase for being in that unit or something. That all that stuff's contract issues. There's been discussion about creating corporal positions. I can't create corporal position because it's not in the contract. Those positions do not exist. I got Deputy Sergeant Lieutenant Captain Under Sheriff Sheriff. Those are the only ones I have to play with. I can't create anything that's not not in existence. So what I'm trying to do is is I'm trying to build my supervisor pool so that even if those detective sergeants are in that rank structure, they are still available to fill in on the supervisor thing as a whole. So so we're going with this is not necessarily specific sergeant to an area. You still have the capability. If I if I take any one of my detectives I currently have, I could pull any one of those guys out of there today and put them as supervisor in the street. I have no problems. Because to get to that position in life, you have to have had some experience in in law enforcement. It's not just some new person that's coming into this. So so in in my way of of thinking, and this isn't something that's just that we haven't put a lot of thought into it. Because if I can gain three more sergeant positions from giving up one little thing, it benefits my supervisor pool across the board. And I'm not saying that a street level position is a little thing. If I sat here in front of you guys and say said that I got seven open positions and we're going to have them all filled by next year, I wouldn't be asking for this. I know from the efforts that we've put into this that that we're gaining, like I told you, we just gained two new positions this week. I hired two more people because I did have nine open. Now I only got seven. But the likelihood of of me filling all seven of those positions in the next year is pretty slim. When I can try to retain and try to keep some of the people that I currently have that are doing a phenomenal job by creating these three other sergeants positions, loading people that deserve to get promoted into these positions, then maybe they stick around a little longer.
Yeah. And I I know I bailed you recently on the motorcycle issue. I try and support you whenever I can. But you know, I swear and I'd have to go back and look at the minutes. I swear when we were talking about retention, I think it was last year. Pay was not the number one issue. You said pay wasn't even issue, you know, mentioned on the exit surveys, and I think Eric backed that up when we talked about that. And now you're standing here saying you want to eliminate a street level position.
I never said pay wasn't an issue.
Said some, somebody said that that was not the, that was not the exit issue. That was not the number one problem. So I mean, I'm always about trying to pay our guys, but let's, let's, I just, I mean, asking us to eliminate you know, a deputy to have three sergeants and detectives. I mean, I I think I didn't know detectives didn't get paid more. I mean, they should be, they absolutely should be getting paid more. They're, you know, supposed to be experts.
I'm not eliminated deputy position, create two, three sergeants and detectives. Already have a sergeant position.
Okay, two, two more, two more sergeants and detectives and then a third one. I just, I don't know.
Mr. Sheriff, I made, yeah, so. And when the sheriff came to meet with me at this, we had a lengthy discussion about this and I support from this perspective. The amount of training and certification goes into having people being detectives is phenomenal. But if I'm working as a detective and I have three or four major crimes, which that seems to be the standard in Lyon County anymore. At some point in time, I asked myself, why do I do all this for the same love of the guy in the streets, making? He he gets a set shift. He gets to go home. I I get called out in the middle of the night. I get to go to every single autopsy of dead people that exist to verify their crime what didn't occur. Why, why would I want to do this? And that's the challenge I see. I can tell you without mentioning names that we have seen a couple of detectives looking at other jobs within the county just to get away from that perspective. So this is an opportunity for the sheriff to provide these folks a little extra money to do the job, keep those people that are trained because it takes two years if he's if he's able to keep people in the training cycle and to get the the background that they need to do the job as a detective. And so from my perspective, keeping those folks that are currently in detectives, keeping them there, giving them some a little extra cash to keep them in that position is the right move for the county in the future. Taking away patrol deputy positioning, I I understand the the concern that the board has. If I had the money, Josh and I have talked about this, if I had the money, there would be a sergeant and four deputies on in Dayton twenty four hours a day, seven days a week, a sergeant and five deputies on firmly twenty four hour day, seven days a week and throughout the.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not dismissing the need, not by any stretch of the imagination. I'm just trying to figure out how to get there. Are these now with these sergeants? Sheriff, would they be permanently promoted sergeant or would they be acting sergeants as long as they're assigned to Detective Bureau? What's?
So so the whole point behind this is, and this is I'm asking for three sergeants positions. Where are they going to end up a hundred percent from now? Maybe they're not going to, maybe they're not just going to wind up in detectives. As for me as a sheriff to decide where they can go. My goal right now is to have two more sergeant positions and detectives. That's a permanent position. Once you're promoted to sergeant, you're sergeant. Doesn't mean you're always going to, you would necessarily be if one of those sergeants asks to be transferred back to patrol and I have a sergeant position in patrol, then they go back to patrol. It's not an acting position. It's not a part time thing. It's a, it's a permanent assignment.
Okay, I thought that some reason I thought the the one sergeant was an acting sergeant.
No, I currently have an acting sergeant right now, but in detectives.
Okay.
But that one, that position is totally separate from what I'm talking about now. That one's already been approved. They've already tested for those positions. We just haven't bumped him up to full time.
Okay, that's what it is. I didn't, okay, I just didn't know it was just one of the side of that position. So no, I I, you know, I love the idea of getting the guys. You know, getting more money, I mean, especially as a detective, like it's, it's boggles my mind that they don't. And I guess I'll get you in just a second. I see. Is there a way to get there from here without? I mean, you know, because we talked about doing the bonuses also. I mean, should we maybe look at open up, opening up contract negotiations then and and figuring out a way to get detectives a, you know, a higher rate of pay or?
That's a discussion for another meeting.
Yeah, I. Okay.
That's not what I'm here asking you guys for. I'm asking you.
I know, I I just, how many, just my final question, how many sergeants do you have right now?
Currently, right now, on paper, I have six. So if by the time we get, we just did sergeant promotional testing, twenty four people put in for it, which is a phenomenal number. We haven't promoted any of those people yet because we have, I have three sergeant positions that are that are open right now that I can promote. The two that you guys gave to me on the budget part and then potentially these three I could not do till after the first of July because it wouldn't be effective until then. So currently, right now, if I if I promoted the three people positions I have open, I would have a total of six. Plus one of detectives.
So right now you have a total of seven sergeant positions. And I'm not, I'm not trying to be adversarial with you. I'm not, I'm trying to figure out how to get there. I mean, like I said, if I could write checks to every one of you guys right now and boost their pay, I'd do it. I mean, there's just not enough money out there to make their job worthwhile.
Well, I would do it too, but I don't make enough sure to do that.
There you go. So Sheriff, just just clarify, you say you have a total of seven sergeants. Is that in patrol, including detectives in jail or is that just patrol?
So I have six patrol sergeants positions. One detective sergeant position, two jail sergeant positions that are currently in existence. So and then the other three positions or five positions that we would gain wouldn't happen till after July first. So two from the budget, three I'm asking for now. So currently on patrol, I have six sergeant positions. One of these positions would be additional one, so we would have seven. And then like one detective sergeant position I currently have, let me back up here. So six patrol, one detective, two jail, that's a shortage.
All right, I'm to go to Commissioner Henderson and then Commissioner Keller.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sheriff, I I feel your pain. I I know what you're trying to do and I appreciate that. I just have a hard time eliminating even an open position. So my question is, and it may involve Mr. Foley, who's sitting back there trying to sneak out the back door, but should? Is there any other way we can get there without eliminating that position?
Not that I'm aware of.
Can you add an addition to that? What is the cost to bump those three sergeants?
Yeah, how how much money are we talking about here total? Because you're adding sixty seven thousand to services and supplies. What what's the other figure? The numbers guy, thank you.
Joshua L. Land County, for for the record, the approximate cost, and this is just an estimate because it really depends on how much they work in overtime. But you're looking at somewhere between twelve to fifteen thousand dollars additional in pay.
I'm sorry?
Twelve to fifteen thousand dollars additional in pay per sergeant position that's upgraded from the deputy position. If that makes sense.
Okay, maybe a better way to ask my question is what do we have budgeted for the vacant position?
Slightly over a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so we're going to take that hundred thousand dollars. Not hire deputy, divide it up, promote three existing officers, two sergeants at twelve to fifteen K extra a year, then add another sixty seven thousand dollars in services and supplies.
That's a proposal, which request, I'm sure.
But if if we were at the upper end of the the range you gave for the raises in pay, we're basically looking at at forty five thousand dollars for the personnel issue, not dealing with the sixty seven thousand dollars in services and supplies. I mean, this is just, just my thoughts. I mean, I'd almost have to take forty five thousand, I could continue to see and promote the three and worry about the supplies later.
So if I could address that, even though that's on the agenda, so I don't know how far off we can get from that, but a significant concern with that is the amount of inflation we're seeing and the contingency is designed for the inflation factor. And I just brought up a hundred and fifty thousand right off the top that we we have that workers' comp has argued some good.
I I get that and I understand that, and especially with, oh, let's see, Sheriff's Department, what do they use a lot of? Oh, gasoline. And I noticed the other night I went by a certain gas station and the price was one thing and I went by the next morning, it was thirty six higher again. So I I understand your concerns there about and and I I agree, I hate dipping into contingency unless we have to, but I'm just I'm really struggling with eliminating a vacant position that we need to to. Yeah, we got a lot of smart people work for this county. We should be able to figure out some way to do this without eliminating an open position. Just just my thoughts and I'll shut up.
Commissioner Keller.
So here's my concern. I eliminating a position or not eliminating a position to me doesn't matter. It's not filled. My my concern is we're taking allocated funds to now increase the positions for three. And then we're going to get into next year's budget and those three people are now making more money. So when we, you know, this inflation and recession moves forward and the county has less money to work with, where's that going to put? This is a question truly to Frank. Where's that going to put you next year? If we come to you and say, hey, you know, the money's not there. Now you've increased their salaries. You can't take it away. And you've decreased a position. I'm just, I'm concerned moving forward. I am not against giving anybody the money that they deserve for the job, but I mean, I don't know about you guys. I'm a little bit worried. You know, the first time I became a commissioner, we were in dire straits. And we did a lot of cuts and we cut. And we did a lot of cuts and we cut a lot of employees across Lion County. If the sheriff's department got hit to that degree today, it it would cripple you. So I I did. I want to plan forward. Let's not be reactionary here.
I mean, every every year, and that's exactly what I'm doing is I'm planning forward. Every year I hear we're getting lose position, you lose position, you lose positions. But what I'm trying to do is, I mean, if you look at it from a simple standpoint, if you got a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which is salary line item for a a deputy position, and let's say worst case, best case scenario is I fill that position with inflation and and raises and all, you're still going to be spending that money anyway. So if I eliminate the position and I add it on to three topped out people that are basically topped out deputies are getting the raise. That's why the that's why it's only coming in like a fourteen thousand dollars a piece or twelve thousand, whatever Josh said. You potentially, we as a group, as a county and me as the sheriff are 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 looking at that possibility, no matter what direction we went with this. I mean, so so what I'm looking at is 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 I'm trying to I'll I'll look at it this way. If I take if I take any one of my detectives and and the county manager alluded this a little bit. It's not two years. It's five years for me to get into the current training level that they're at. We spend thousands of dollars a year to make sure these guys can do what they can do. If I lose those guys, you're gonna be out more money in because then I gotta take somebody else new and put them into that position and 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 I'll be quite honest with you. If I had a detective opening today and I put it out there in in the job market. And I just say this because the last two times we've done this, zero people put in for it. When I was a young deputy, I aspired to be a detective. That's why I wanted to be. I wanted to wear a suit every day. Well, most of our guys today do not want to do sexual assaults every day. They don't want to do child abuses every day. They don't want to do those cases that, I mean, every once in a while you have a murder homicide and it's fun for a minute and you get to spend all your time doing it. But you're not getting the people interested in going to detectives. So then I take potential detective division, which numbered six at one point in time. I'm down to three because one of my rotational positions just requested to transfer out because I didn't want to do it anymore, down to like one person. If I don't do something to keep those people in those positions and we wind up with another Naomi case, this county is in a bad way. So I mean, that's why you said.
The other issue that I want to bring to the board's attention. So the sheriff is has alluded to that he has two positions that he's filling just as a war. This will give him three positions. So my single biggest bitch, sorry, complaint with the sheriff's office since I took this job is inadequate supervision. We we are running shifts where we have six to eight deputies working countywide without a supervisor on shift to address supervisory issue. Even though he's got numbers, you still have the account. They go on vacation. They have sick leave. They also have to have training. We have to have a sufficient amount of supervision so that we have supervision in patrol and the jail. I'll be honest with you, that having two sergeants in the jail, we need to at least do more. Um, so we have proper supervision. The reason why it's my biggest complaint is in the last twelve years, I have spent more time in federal court on litigation over things the sheriff's office has done or not done than I ever did when in twenty-one years that I spent in law enforcement in state court. Because we have inadequate levels of supervision, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. When I started nineteen eighty-five, it wasn't a big deal. There were four of us on a shift countywide. It wasn't that big of a deal. We had a population thirteen thousand. My first four years there, we didn't have a homicide. We're doing a couple homicides a year. So things have changed. The liability structure has changed. The risk has changed. So we've got to find some way of supporting the sheriff and getting him the supervision that he needs and keeping those people in detectives and making something that he making their an opportunity for people to see the benefit of being a detective besides just the fame and glory of being a detective. And that fame and glory of being a detective is no longer the the draw to these guys. Um, because again, it's it's the hours. Yeah, yeah, they have a set schedule, but it's sitting down to eat dinner with the family in Carson City and get a phone call from dispatch. We have a a dead body. You need to drive to Smith Valley to address it. Um, that gets old very quickly without some compensation for those folks. The sheriff's can be a bad spot very quick.
So again, you know, I agree, especially we need more supervisors out in the field. There's, you know, I guess times there's no there. There's no commander in the field or whatnot, but correct me if I'm wrong, a detective sergeant, though, isn't that typically somebody who's that's been a detective for quite a while and has risen to a supervisory position within the detective bureau?
So every one of those guys that's currently in detectives have been with this agency for ten plus years already. It's not like somebody that's just new. So it the the benefit to 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 me as a sheriff or wherever sheriff, it doesn't make any difference. As a fact, is if the promotional opportunity comes to promote to detective down the road, then then it kind of it's gonna go to somebody that's basically testing for sergeant position. So kind of what you're saying. So you're not this. It's not somebody that doesn't have experience. Like I said earlier, I could take any one of those three guys right now today and put them on the street because they've all worked the street. They've all worked the jail. They've all done every aspect of this agency and and be very comfortable with them carrying out the role of the supervisor on any in any other capacity. Um, so so you're not tip, you're not just taking somebody that doesn't have a lot of experience and and the only reason that a short version of the story, and I know Josh has probably got something else to add. I understand that this county is strapped for money. Do I do I support that my people get more money? Yeah, we haven't figured out how we're gonna do that yet. By me doing this, I can I can accomplish what I want to try to accomplish without costing you guys as a board any more money. And and I can make it happen today versus waiting for two more years to go to a contract. So. Joshua, I kind of come forth for the record. I wish the timing on this was slightly different because had this been three months ago?
No.
And I'm not chastising. I'm just trying to put in perspective for the board. Had this been three months ago, there would be no discussion whatsoever about where eliminating position. Reality is, if we're taking a look at it, during the budget process, we added, starting this July first, we added two sergeant positions. Brand new sergeant positions. If he had come in and said during budget time, I want to add one new sergeant position and upgrade three deputy positions to sergeant positions. I don't think there would have been a single, hey, I have a concern about this. I think we would have had filled in the budget, sign off, and let's go forward. We are in no different shape at the end of this agenda item than if it would have been approached at that way during the budget process. And so I think it's I if you're looking at apples to apples and that type of scenario, he is not quote unquote, losing a position, although on the pa- on paper he is because of the way the budget was built and the timing of this, but he's still ahead. And if it had been requested three months ago, I would suspect it would have been a five over.
Question, are there any other positions in the county that was that have been hard to fill that we that are just sitting vacant?
So we have deputy district terminal positions. We've got, I believe, we have one vague three.
Three deputy DA positions?
And we've had, we just filled one. One's getting filled right away, isn't it? Yeah, so we're effectively, we're down through. We have one starting within a two weeks. And then we have a juvenile probation officer in firmly where we've been in that one for months trying to fill that particular position. We have other positions that at times are difficult to fill. But we've been more successful in getting those in a more timely manner than we have the average. And since the sheriff has been here, the sheriff, I believe we have one time for one week, we were completely fully staffed. And since that time, we have added eight positions. Eight new positions. And so we're having a hard time filling those new positions. But the good news is, is he's able to actually be up to where he was fully staffed before we created those positions essentially.
Yeah, nobody's questioning that. That's.
Right. So looking at that one deputy position, I'm looking at it going, it's never been filled. I would love to have it filled, but the reality of today's job market is probably for the next two years, it's not even an option. And this is a way for the sheriff potentially to retain some of the staff so we don't exacerbate the existence of just one person.
So the two unfilled deputy DA positions, apparently ones get filled, so there's still two unopened or unfilled ones. How long have those been open?
I would say at least eight months. Well, it's a rotating thing. Just like it is on the deputy position. If you ask me how long has this deputy position been been uh filled, I'm gonna tell you it's never been filled, but the reality is you fill a position and another one goes, it's like playing whack-a-mole, right? It's exactly what we're what the sheriff has been trying to do. And so the I would say probably since September or October. We started on those and it's just a whack-a-mole on the deputy.
So I just, I mean, and even though that one's never been filled, I I have real problems eliminating that. I mean, I
Yeah, no one.
Deputy DA is gonna be even harder to fill. And I'm just wondering, maybe we could rob Peter to pay Paul to, you know, meet those needs and uh, you know.
Mr. Chairman, I think you're kind of trying to go off of the actual item in front of you and I'm sure when you're ready.
Trying to be creative.
One more little piece on this. One thing to keep in mind is that all sergeant positions currently are act are working sergeant positions. They're all filling shifts. They're doing all that. This doesn't change that. Um, so so yes, we we are eliminating a position and and I'd be the first one to tell you, I sat up here for the last three years and argue for people, 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 I need people. And like, when we come back to budget next year, I'm probably gonna argue for for more people. This is this is a a a fix for the current, not a fix. This is in addition to the current supervisor's position that we're in. Am I gonna sit in here in front of you guys next year and ask for more deputy positions? Dar, right, I am. If I get them or not, we'll see what the economy does or or whatever. And and I just think it's important that that everybody doesn't lose track is, yes, I'm losing any vacant position, but I'm not losing a personnel on the street. I mean, that's the difference between us. I mean, I still have the same number of working people.
Commissioner, I'll get you in just a second. So why ask to eliminate it? Why not just request to leave it unfilled for the year? But if you're gonna ask us for more positions.
Because I gotta have the money. I gotta have the money for the for those. I can't I can't do that without eliminating the position because that that salary money is gonna come from my eliminated position, go to to back to the other.
You can't just leave it unfilled? And I mean.
So the challenge with leaving it unfilled is is that so next year for some miraculous event occurs, he's able to fill all those positions. Now he doesn't have the money to fill that last position because he has these three or three extra sergeants. That's the challenge that you have. I don't know. We want to go down, set the precedent that, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna increase a supervisor. We're gonna add additional supervisor in the road department by not filling this road department position or any other department in the in the county. It's not just a sheriff's office issue. Once we, once we set a precedent, then it opens up for other elected appointed officials to come send concern.
Commissioner Keller.
I just want to make a motion to approve eliminating one vacant deputy position and using the savings to upgrade three existing deputy positions to sergeant positions and increase services and supplies as well because I have full faith in our sheriff that he knows what he's doing.
Second.
Any further discussion from the board?
Just a comment, Mr. Chair. There's gotta be a better way. Yeah, there is. I mean, I I understand the need to have sheriff and I'm sympathetic to that. I am a little concerned with just a sixty-seven thousand dollars being thrown in the services and supplies with no real justification except for inflation, but um I think we need to do this smarter next time.
Mr. Rockery.
Nothing further to add.
Okay, any public comment? Um, I just, I yeah, my thoughts are known. I mean, I full faith and, you know, trust the sheriff as well. I just had to ask questions. So this time I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed.
Yep.
Did I not vote aye?
You vote aye on what? Okay, passes five oh.
Could you please clarify who the name was?
The there was no name. It was five oh.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, moving on to uh, actually, we're gonna recess for convenience. Willow Creek G I D. Public participation at this time. No action will be taken on any item till it's properly agenda. It's anticipated that public participation will be held at this time. Though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda, citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will also be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda item, but before the board takes any action. Any public participation?
Online.
Uh. I'm twenty-one A. Possible action review and accept claims to financial reports.
Mr. Chairman, to approve, I'm twenty-one A. As presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Any public comment? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion passes five oh. Item twenty-one B. Possible action, approve debt management policy and capital improvement plan for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Foley.
Josh Foley, like kind of come forward for the record. We are not proposing any additional debt for Will Creek. They do have two existing senior bonds with USBA and this is just state shows.
Thank you. Hey, uh, looking for motion.
Motion to approve debt management policy and capital improvement plan for twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two.
Second. Okay, any comments? Any discussion? Any public comment? Saying none, call for the vote. All favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five oh. Any public comment before we close this item out? Saying none, uh, we're adjourned to reconvenance. The Mason Valley, Miskito Abeyment District Board. Uh, public participation, same rules applied before. Is there any public participation at this time? So you know, public participation, we're gonna go on to item number twenty-four, reports for possible action, review and accept claims and financial reports.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to approve item twenty-four A. As presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a couple of seconds. Uh, any discussion? Any public comment? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes five oh. Possible action, except the March ninth and April thirteen, twenty twenty-two district manager report and minutes.
Motion to approve twenty-four B. As presented.
Second. Any discussion? Any public comment? Saying none, call for the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh. Motion passes five oh. We're gonna adjourn. Sorry, we're gonna go back to a public participation. Single public participation. We're going to adjourn to reconvenance, line county board, county commissioners, uh, agenda requests. We will start with Commissioner Keller.
And none at this time.
None at this time, Chairman Gray.
None at this time. I am working on one, but I need to get with the county manager and Mr. Foley a little more before I'm ready to bring it.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner comments. Uh, we will start with Commissioner Keller again.
Uh, you know, I I think I did well by comments in this morning, so I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hawkeye.
I'm good. Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson.
I'm good. Thank you.
Commissioner Jackson.
Uh, real quickly, I just want to wish our graduating seniors from Lion County well and um I hope you go off, see the world, do whatever you want to do and maybe come back and join us when uh you're ready to be an adult. Good luck. Have fun.
And pay taxes.
Yeah, there you go. Uh, I have nothing. Uh, do we have a closed session today? Okay, uh, we're gonna go to our final public participation. Is there any public participation? I think it was not on the agenda. Saying none, we're going to adjourn this meeting.